...network wherever you listen and join us as we celebrate and connect with our amazing community.
Northport Now will be released bi-weekly.
Northport Stories and Living will be monthly.
A schedule will be available on social media and our website.
Hello, everyone. Devon Pulis here, Aquatics Manager. Welcome to my crib. We have fun here at the crib, programs included. Become a Pass member, play all year long. Here at the crib, we do have rules. We take all payments here at the crib, Apple Pay, MasterCard, Visa, cash. You pay right here to enjoy the crib. Enter through the gate. Childproof, most adult-proof. Shade. What's that? Our newly-installed sun shade available for rent all season long. Here at my crib, you don't have to worry about a place to find a seat. We've added more chairs than ever here at the crib. You're coming to enjoy the cribs and you got little ones? We got the perfect area for them, our Pelican Playground. Newly painted, fresh floor, fresh palm tree. It's looking clean. Looking for a place to work your upper body? Take a shot here at our Stingray Shuffle. Looking to relax? I got you covered here with our Lazy River. Living more on the adventurous side? Check out the slides right behind me. Newly painted. All offer something individual and unique. Check it out. Check out the main pool, kept at a wonderful 84 degrees all year long. I just want you to have a good time. We have safety covered. Lifeguards here, staff, all day, every day, when we're open for you to enjoy. Concession is open. Pizza, pretzels, nachos, ice cream. We got it all. My crib is your crib. Looking forward to seeing you here.
To each his own.
Duty calls.
I'm Stacy Losio. I am the Emergency Management Coordinator for the City of Northport, and I'm going to be talking about having an evacuation plan. It's important to have an evacuation plan ahead of time, and it's very important to write it down because that way you can have it somewhere present where everybody in your family can see it and keep it fresh in their minds. And you want to also share it with people in your family or your neighbors so that they know what your plans are ahead of time and how to get ahold of you or where to look for you after a disaster. For your evacuation plans, you should have multiple routes to get to the location you're planning to go to, just because traffic-wise, traffic on 75 might be gridlocked. There could be some very good backroads to get to where you're going that could get you there more quickly without being stuck in traffic. When you're making an evacuation plan, we usually tell you four different things. You should stay home if you are not in a zone that's being evacuated, and if your home is built to withstand the forecasted storm. If you can't stay home and you evacuate, your next option should be to go to a friend or family's home that is outside of the evacuation area and is structurally sound to withstand the storm. Third option would be go to a hotel. They're much more comfortable than our evacuation centers. Fourth option would be to go to one of our evacuation centers. Sarasota County has 12 evacuation centers. Those can be found on their website. I'm Stacy Losio. I'm the Emergency Manager for the City of Northport, and I'm going to discuss first responders after the storm. So it may take a while for first responders to get to after the storm, and that's due to a variety of reasons. One being, we pull first responders off the roads when tropical storm force winds are sustained for their safety. That is a standard usually across the state and other states that I've been in.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Wednesday, March 12th, 2025. It's 2:00 PM. We're in the city chambers, and I call the City Commission Workshop Meeting to order. Commissioners President, Commissioner Duval, Commissioner Langdon, Mayor Stokes, Vice Mayor Emrich, and Commissioner Petro. There is a quorum present for the meeting. Also present, City Manager Fletcher, interim City Attorney Golan, City Clerk Faust, Sports Specialist Lane, Fire Chief Titus, and no one from the police. That's the budget we go after today. Ms. Luke, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
All right. City Clerk, public comments.
Yes. Mike Adams. I am a single father with four children under eight years old. I rely on parks daily within our city. My family uses parks as a place to let kids interact with others and get 60-plus minutes of activity a day. I have used the park restrooms to change diapers, use parks to occupy children while I make phone calls to pay bills and have picnics for the kids. I am grateful I have somewhere to do so. There is always a challenge raising children. Anyone who had one or more would understand. My children's favorite thing in the world is the playground. When it rains and we can't go, it becomes chaos at home or in the car. I understand the discussion of user fees, but simply cannot afford to pay everything deeming it hard to provide a safe, happy place for my children. We have lived in other cities where they charge or state parks, but becomes a minimal memory in our life due to accessibility by payment. We enjoy parks and depend on them to provide the safe, shaded, and friendly place that we both require in South Florida. Thank you, Mike Adams. Andrea Donza. Closing on the Mullen Center, I oppose. This facility was a lifesaver for our business when our building was destroyed after Hurricane Ian. If we didn't have this building available to us to rent, our business would have closed and never to reopen. I am grateful it was an option for us when we had nowhere to go. This type of community building was a place for our youth to go when there was nowhere else to relocate. Jessica Lally. I am writing today as a Northport resident who has resided in the area for more than 10 years. I had three children go through the school system and play sports locally. They have used parks and recreation facilities in every facet of their lives here in Northport. I am appalled to see the commissioners who are supposed to represent us completely neglect us as residents. The Mullen Center gym served and continues to serve the Northport's Junior Bobcats Cheer Team my daughter was part of. What would happen if there is no more gymnasium here? You are telling me the only athletes you care about are the ones on the field. This group already has to share the gymnasium space with other leagues because there are not enough indoor athletic facilities. The Aquatic Center is the only fun thing for families in Northport. I have never understood why it is questioned. The staff runs the facility well, and people come from out of the area to visit. Talk about economic development, driving people out of their own city because you want to take everything away. In person, we have Jill Luke.
Morning, everybody. I have not had the time to follow everything that's going on, but I have heard drifts, of course, throughout the community. Back when the Aquatic Center was being discussed, I was on the board. I wanted it to actually go before a vote of the community because aquatic never makes money, never. I've run them myself. I've had two pools underneath me, and that is an amenity that goes out to the community. You can try to balance it as much as you can, but I don't see any way that it can. I always stated, because it started out over $1 million in debt, and then went to 600 in debt, and then to 300. I always said if you could get it to a negative quarter of a million, you're doing great, absolutely great. But you're never going to be able to balance it unless you're charging the people of the community more money. And that takes away, I mean, there's a fine balance because it's supposed to be an amenity. So do you want to price it out of the range of the families or not? Mullen Center, again, a community asset. Community uses it. I haven't looked at your numbers. I don't know how much it takes for the oversight and overhead of that building. That building's not that old, and it's utilized. Can it be used for more programming? Probably sure could. You've got the pickleball, you've got badminton, you've got volleyball. You could create a women's volleyball league. You could create children's volleyball league during the wintertime. There's so many programs that could be added to that gymnasium. Get rid of the equipment room? Yeah. The weight room? Yeah. It's too close to the other one, and you've got overhead going into that room. That is not necessary. So in agreement of that. But I wouldn't ax the Mullen Center at all. If your Parks and Rec, who supply the amenities that these families, such as the people have written public comment, have stated these families need this in our area. Camp goes on. Summer camp goes on over at the Mullen Center. What are these families going to do for all of those families to try to find childcare in this city for the summer? Where are they going to get it? Boys' and girls' clubs are not even really existing at this point. We need to take compassion upon our families. Let Parks and Rec come up with some programming to show you that if they're not making the money over there, I don't know whether they are or not, but give them the opportunity. Don't just slice it trying to make the bill look better. Again, Parks and Rec is an amenity. It's not a moneymaker, and that's why you're a city.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Debbie McDowell, and I'm here because every department is unique. Every department provides a service which makes Northport the best city. After watching the March 3rd workshop, I was compelled to come and advocate for Parks and Rec, especially after the beatdown y'all gave them. Yes, community parks, community ballfields, the Aquatic Center, Warren Mill Springs, community centers, community events are expensive, but it's an amenity. However, how can you put a price tag on this amenity? They have a positive impact, every single one of those places, on the overall benefit of the city. Everybody uses them in some form or fashion, regardless of the age. The community centers are far more than a gym. Yes, close this gym. Use it for more meeting space. They provide the meeting spaces, they provide classes, they provide activities, and so much more. Don't forget, both the Morgan and Mullen Center are daycares for when school is out of a session, and that daycare requires no citizen tax dollars, zero. It is self-sufficient. Parks and Rec provide gathering places for all of the citizens and visitors, and that is unquantifiable. March 3rd meeting focused on fees for services provided. Loved hearing how y'all wanted analysis on that. But I'm going to be bold, and I'm going to point out inequity. When the focus was only on Parks and Rec, there's another department that contributes so much to our city and collects nothing for the services they provide, social services. What about the leases at the Family Services Building? They're about $12 a square foot and nowhere near enough to collect for the responsibilities that building requires and those costs associated. It would be preposterous for anyone to consider terminating any of the features that are provided by Parks and Rec, just like it would be preposterous to terminate the services provided by Social Services Department or terminate the leases for those nonprofits. These are amenities. To make up some of these budget shortfalls, shift your focus to Sarasota County. Northport receives minimal services from the county compared to the taxes that Northporters pay. I can give you countless examples. You have my phone number. I would love to meet with you. By the way...
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to general business, a 25-1944 Discussion and Possible Direction Regarding the Fiscal Year of 2025-26 Budget Assumptions, Projections, and Priorities. City Manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a presentation that we're going to walk through with you, the board and the community. But first of all, I just wanted to say a few things regarding where we're at and what we're doing. I know we have two new commissioners, and this is your very first time being introduced to our budget kickoff, and it's a lot of information for you to not only hear today, but what you'll hear over the next several months as we move towards adopting the budget before the end of the fiscal year in September. As you go through this process, we encourage you to read and sort of understand all the information that is there, and we're here to help you through the process. The meetings that you want to have with finance and our team, as many as you need in order to get your level of understanding where you're comfortable in making your choices as you represent your respective constituents, we're here to help you get there. It is not easy, and this budget, and every budget every year, is the single most important document that you will approve every single year. So as we move forward, we know that we actually have heard from our governor, who has given direction to what his staff will do as it relates to local governments and how they are managing their finances. And we, as a city, City of Northport, one of the fastest-growing cities, and we've had pros and cons with that growth, we feel very comfortable in what we've done and what we're doing so that we could be able to explain, show, and hopefully be a model to lead what cities should be doing as they go through areas of growth as we're going through. Whether it boils down to our taxes, which have stayed five years the same as far as the millet rate, or whether you're talking about our FTEs, which are in line with our growth curve, we are very comfortable in defending and allowing anyone to look at our numbers so that we can prove that we are being efficient. Does that mean that we cannot be more efficient? No, it does not. And I think that looking at our discretionary spending, this particular year is going to go a long way to hopefully meet the goals that you want to accomplish. You're also going to hear in our presentation today regarding the strategic plan that you looked at, edited, and worked on with Doug Thomas from SGR shortly after you were onboarded. That's where the commission and the vision and your goals and outcomes are derived from. You set the vision through those pillars and what your priorities are, and then we manage the programs and tell you how we're going to get there. Or in this case, in this year, we're going to tell you what we're going to do or what we need to do in order to meet that goal, given the current climate of the city, the county, the state, the country, whichever one you want to pick. They're all looking very shaky right now, and if the truth of a recession does happen, that's something that we need to think about and we need to talk about. That's not something that we're throwing out there as a buzzword, but it is a reality that people are considering. And if it happens, I want this city to be prepared, just like you want this city to be prepared. But we know that we only have so many resources, and we know that we have a lot of things that we want to get done. So we are at the point of considering what services we would be adjusting in order to make that number that you want us to hit. In my mind, it's a combination of what do you want to do with revenues and how do you want us to examine expenses? I hope that it's not a situation where we say no to all of the revenue-generating opportunities and say yes to, you know, expense cuts as well. There needs to be a balance there that we can bring back to you so that you can feel comfortable in where this city is going. Because if we damage the growth that we're happening, then all of the future plans that we know that we're counting on are not going to come to fruition. And I do believe there's a balance in the services we provide. I know there was conversation about Parks and Recs, but there is no sacred cow, and Parks and Recs is not a sacred cow. What I heard last week was, I would like for you staff to think differently about how do you improve the cost recovery rate of this city? And that's what it boils down to me, and that's what you're going to hear us talk about at the end with the information I sent you all yesterday evening. It boils down to cost recovery for Parks and Recs. We know they provide a great quality of life. We know that they are a driver of why people want to be here. It does not mean that we cannot think of new events and new opportunities to raise revenues and come back to the table and say, how do we get that number down? There are no sacred cows, so let's just talk about them all. Doesn't mean we're going to change them all, but let's make sure that we talk about them all in the proper context. So having said all that, I'll get us going with the presentation. There you please. There we go.
CM, do you want us to hold all questions till the end of the presentation and then go back through?
No. I would rather you just stop me and say, hey, let's talk about that for a second. Now, I will say that, you know, currently, and Madam Clerk, I'm going to give you a copy of the updated presentation that I'm doing today. There's a few more slides that were added and one edit that I'll talk about as well. So it's a little bit different for those following at home, but we'll make sure that we get it online as soon as we can.
As we go along.
All right. As we, maybe... Actually, the first slide is kind of important. Can you hit the button on the computer while we try to get that working? Yeah. I'm sorry, I hit it twice. Thank you so much. So this is a graph that we added in just a few minutes ago, and it shows that it was a survey of the America's Most Chained Cities in a five-year study from 2018 to 2024. And it was by Good Migrations Relocation Resource Platform that analyzes city trends. And of course, the City of Northport was on there. We were actually listed number 20 out of 191 U.S. metros nationwide. And I know that you've all heard us talk about growth, and we all keep saying it, whether it's permits, whether it's people. We know that we're growing, and that cannot be more highlighted by our overall score of 6.82 out of 10 as it relates to people who are coming here. So some key highlights from the growth of the last five years. 13% growth in population, 30% increase in median household income, 11% job creation growth for new businesses, 8% for employment growth, and 65% increase in home values. These are numbers that every jurisdiction cannot say and definitely cannot compare to the City of Northport. So when people talk about the City of Northport, when you look at it from a governor's standpoint, and you talk about the population growth that we have, the taxes that we provide to the state, you talk about things that the, other things that the state cares about, how much debt do you have? Our debt numbers are very low because we have limited borrowing authority. And, you know, we know that our debt, even though we're looking to incur some for some major projects, we know that the ULDC rewrite is going to offset that and allow revenue to come in to help us and help the city in the next couple of years. We are in a very good spot to take care of our growth, and we just got to make sure that we maintain ourselves through this, what may be a rough time, so that people still want to come here. We don't want to jeopardize the people who want to come here, and I want that message sort of be there. Thank you. So here are the actual changes in our fund balance over the last, over the last three years. Let me see before you... Oh, it's over there. Okay, all right. Let me just keep going until we figure out where to point it. Okay, so these are our actual changes in revenue balances over the last few years. And when you look at us beginning in fiscal year '22, we had the General Fund, Road and Drainage District, Fire Rescue District, Solid Waste District, and the Building Fund. They were all good fund balances. The one that we want to make sure that we talked about this year was the Road and Drainage District. Their fund balance based on the actual money we paid out for Hurricane Ian. I want to say we had, was it two years or two and a half years, to actually get their fund balance right-sized, and we're proud to say that we believe that that's going to be done on schedule as we did tell you it needed to be once we severely borrowed our funds for Ian. For those of you who were not here during that time period, the fact that we had to pay out over $60 million in hurricane recovery, most of which we've gotten back, we had to drain one particular fund. So by law, you had to create a plan and a pathway so that you could restore that in a two- to three-year window, which is what we've done. Having a Hurricane Ian right now is not a problem. We would do the same thing with Ian. Having another hurricane on top of Hurricane Ian in the same season would be a very big problem because we don't have the ability to borrow, which goes back to the disaster recovery referendum question that we're hopefully getting to get passed on the May 13 ballot in our special election. When you look at the next slide, which reflects the fund balance analysis of 2025, jumped ahead a little bit on the Road and Drainage one, but as you can see right there, that projected fund balance of negative 801, that's the one that we're working on. Our general fund of $3.5 billion, that is lower than we would like, but we paid for some things out of there recently, including the design work that we did on the police headquarters and some other things that we needed done to keep some projects moving. But we know that that number could always be higher, and that's in excess of our reserve. Let me be clear. We have a 20% reserve right there of $17.7 million in the general fund, first column. So that is by law, by our policy, that you have adopted as a commission to make sure that we are prepared. So I want to make sure everyone knows up there that we are prepared and we have the right level of reserve, but we could always have more. The next slide will show you that as we create our budget, there are some... I'm sorry, was there a question?
Before...
Yes. I'm sorry. Can we go back to that one?
That slide. Just a question. So looking at them across the board, there's about $15 million in fund balance. So prior to Ian, it was quite a bit more than that, was it not?
The Road and Drainage would have been more than that. I don't know what it was prior to Ian, but it would have been more than that.
But it was pretty significant. Okay. Commissioner Langdon?
Right, but I think he's talking about, like, just looking at... Right. Road and Drainage, it had to have a positive value. I just don't know what it was. Right. But yes, as the answer to his question.
Refresh my memory on reserves. Were required by the state to hold 10%? Or is it 20%? I thought 20% was the maximum.
I think 20% is your policy adopted number. The state number is lower than that. So you, as a board, have adopted a number above and beyond what the state requires.
Correct. But just to be clear, does the state limit us? I think the state requires a minimum of 10% if I remember correctly. I'm just going through this because we have some new folks.
Right.
But does the state also cap us at 20%?
Oh. We, since they don't require us to have a minimum balance, they require us to have a balanced budget, which is their requirement. I doubt they have a cap on how much you can set as a policy as a commission. But I believe this policy has, I mean, this commission has set their own policy.
It was 20%, right. Okay, thank you for that.
Good. Okay. All right. The next slide talks about some of the assumptions that we have made directly into the general fund. The taxable value, the taxable value estimated increase of 7.5%. That is definitely on the conservative side, and we always do that because we don't want to overstate ourselves and then end up in a worse position as we move forward through the process. Last year's number was 17%, and the year before that was 20-some-odd percent. But you can see that the trend, of course, is as we know, the prices are coming back down and normalizing themselves. So we should still hopefully end up around 10%, hopefully at the very worst. But as we put this together and we get information from you, that number will become more accurate, and then we'll update you accordingly. The budget ad valorem revenue is at a 96.5% collection rate, which looks to bring in an additional $2.4 million if we keep the same millet rate. Part of the assumptions, as we lead up to it towards the end of this day, will, I'll be asking you if you want to increase that number, reduce that number, keep that number the same. It's a great conversation to have as we create this budget.
Where you go forward. Okay. Commissioner Duval, go ahead.
Yes, City Manager. That taxable value estimated increase of 7.5%. Is that 7.5% expected increase of the value of all our, all city properties? Or is it a result of some increase of the value and some because we have a lot more houses than we had before? Or is it a combination of the two?
Yeah. I would say a combination. Yeah, I would say, I would say a combination of the two is how you get there. I believe there is a way we can track new construction in that number that, that gives that number a boost, so to speak. But I'm not sure if I have that, we have that number today, but. Yeah, she said we'll have it in May. But if you want to know what new construction directly does to our.
Thank you.
Let me just comment on that. The taxable value estimated increase is an estimate of what the county is going to do with regard to the assessed values as an average, okay, for our city. Like you said, we experienced 17% last year, almost 20 the year before. So irrespective of, this has nothing to do with revenue from new development. This just has to do with the estimation of what we think at this point in time the assessed value is going to be. If you take, you know, if it goes up 10% and revenue from millage rate revenue goes up 10%, we can capture that number, and that's what this estimate is all about. But it's, but it doesn't include additional property tax revenue, and correct me if I'm wrong, additional property tax revenue from new development. If 3,000 or 4,000 new properties were built and occupied. In other words, this is just what the overall percentage of increase in appreciation would be.
This is, this is an estimate of the increase in the total taxable value, whether it's from your house going up in value or a new house next door. It's all together.
What, what you're saying.
So inclusive of the revenue, if 3,000 new homes were built, okay, and now occupied, they are now new tax-paying properties. So included in this seven and a half percent is the additional revenue they're contributing?
It's a seven and a half, seven and a half.
No way.
Right now, it's conservative, like you said. We don't want to go out and put 17% in now and not have that come to fruition. So right now, we're putting in an estimate of seven and a half percent for the total growth of the taxable value of a city, whether it be from new construction or whether it be increases in, in individual existing homes and changes from, you know, save our homes and the homestead exemption is going to adjust a little bit this year. We, I believe they approve for it to increase by the CPI as well. So right now, it's our seven and a half percent conservative estimate. We'll get a better estimate at the end of May.
Right, I, I feel like what you're saying is there's a, there's a lag in between something being newly constructed and being, being able to realize that taxable value right now. But the way you look at it, whether it was built and wasn't properly taxed, I hope I'm saying your example right, last year, it would be in the mix this year. And then something that was built tomorrow would be in the taxable value for next year.
Yeah, I just, what, what I wanted to get clarified was, does the brand-new revenue being produced by all this residential and commercial development that may have taken place in the last year, does that factor into that seven and a half percent? Or is that money that's going to be additionally contributed to our budget, okay? My understanding, so it's been, again, I could be wrong, like this estimate of seven and a half percent, whether it's seven and a half, 10, 15, whatever it is, is the increase in assessed value that the county will, will assess? In other words, the county will say the, the properties have gone up seven and a half percent in value. That increase in value creates additional revenue for our city. But does that also include new development? Because.
Why would it not? Yeah, right.
Well, that could be a separate line item. That's what I was trying to get at. So, you know, if we just looked at our property revenue and said, okay, just, you know, estimate it up seven and a half percent, that's the total revenue we're getting, or is there more revenue to come? How?
So the seven and a half percent, this one is just speaking to the tax roll increase. So meaning the taxable value, you add all of Northport together is going to go up seven and a half percent.
Right.
So what this is talking about is just the ad valorem revenue increases. I think you're saying that, that those new homes bring other revenues. They bring other positive impacts on Northport. No, that's not included. We're only talking about the ad valorem.
Thank you, because, because when you look at this slide and it, and it says these assumptions will bring in an additional $2.4 million. And then you look at going a slide or two ahead, you see that we've got costs going up five or six million. We say, oh my God, we're already three million behind the egg ball. We aren't. We aren't at all. Yeah, there's a whole lot more revenue that's coming our way. So it, you know, I just didn't want to, these slides to misinterpret that. Thank you. You answered my question. Okay.
Okay, next slide, we are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Petro. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm going back to the road and drainage slide, that negative amount. Do we have to, this have to be made, made up, make, we have to make this up in the budget? We have to come up with this money, correct?
We, we have until the end of '26 to get that home.
Oh, okay.
But that number, Commissioner, trust me when I say that number has gone down tremendously over the last two years since we actually used that as a funding source. And legally, we have to make sure that it gets down by the, by a certain period of time. And that period of time is the end of fiscal year '26.
'26, okay.
Okay, good, good. All right. Next slide, discuss the local municipalities and counties, the effective millage rate per 1,000. It shows the city of Northport is at 6.2976. As you can see, our effective millage rate is number two on this chart next to Charlotte County, which has 10.4643.
CM, could you explain or somebody, what's the difference between, what's added in between the raw millage rate of 3.7667 and the effective 6.2976 that maybe benefit our two new commissioners? What categories? You know, what brings it up to that 6.3 roughly?
It's going to be all your ad valorem and non-ad valorem assessments. So for other cities, it may include debt. For us, it includes fire district, solid waste district, road and drainage district. Some of them, stormwater, which is in our road and drainage for some of the others. Anything that's kind of on your tax bill.
Okay, does it include county?
No.
No. Okay, I just want to just clarify. I know, I'm just asking in case anybody's wondering.
All right, okay. Thank you. Good question. All right, moving on. The next slide talks about the 2024 taxable value in dollars. We're nearly at $10 billion. And as you can see, we do very well compared to our competitor, ah, competitors, our sister cities and counties. We're 18 billion in the city of Sarasota, 32 for Charlotte County, and 104 approximately for Sarasota County. The next slide discusses the taxable value in dollars for municipalities only. As you can see, there's our $10 billion as it compares to some of the other cities that were just on the chart before. The next slide gives you the per capita revenue estimated based on the effective millage rate. You can see our $680 per capita revenue is on the low side. And again, this is how we try to raise that number up because we want our per capita or estimate for our millage rate to be higher than it is.
Got a couple of questions here.
Yep.
First, Commissioner Petro, did you get your question answered? Okay, then Commissioner Duval?
Yes, I just want to make sure I have the correct personal understanding. If we look at that first slide that shows city of Northport, millage rate, 6.29, and compare it to the city of Sarasota at 3.14, it makes it look like, you know, we're collecting twice as much. But if you go to the next slide, you'll see the city of Northport's income revenues, you know, taxable value is at 9.9 compared to city of Sarasota, 18. And I, I've got this straight in my mind, I think this is, this means that the values of properties in Sarasota are a lot higher than here. So they're getting more money at a lower millage rate. It doesn't mean that we're overtaxing our, our people by that millage rate.
No, it definitely does not mean that. But I'm not sure if we can speak to the millage rate of the city of Sarasota. I don't think I ever have asked what it is. But based on their taxable value and how we have half of that on our side, it shows a correspondence in those numbers that if we had more taxable value, then we could sort of catch up to the revenue that they get. And hopefully, our taxable value will keep increasing based on the growth of the city and how we're investing back in the city.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have some questions relative to that as well. My understanding is that the city of Sarasota contracts with the county for their fire and rescue and police services. Is that captured in their effective millage rate? Or would that be, or did we not capture that?
So there wouldn't be any, so you could take, their actual millage rate would reflect closer to what their effective one is because there would be no fire district fee to add in.
Right.
So our number, the effective millage rate, is a little bit higher because we've said, let's factor that road and, road and drainage, fire, all of those in as if they were millage. So we can do apples-to-apples comparison. Obviously, that, that's difficult. We're complex organizations, but that's the way we like to compare the two. So.
Right. But I guess what I'm asking, in our effective millage rate, it includes what we spend on police and fire and rescue? City of Sarasota does not provide those safety services directly. They contract with the sheriff for their police services and with the county's fire and district, fire and, and rescue services. Is in 3.1, are those services that they get from the county part of their effective millage rate? Or is that separate?
Only if there's an assessment of those.
Is there for the city? I just want to make sure we're comparing apples and oranges here.
Could you roll back to that slide, please?
Slide five.
Yeah, there we go.
He just said they do not contract with the sheriff. They have their own police department.
Okay, so it's just fire and rescue that they contract? Okay. So same question holds is.
So when we do comparisons of expenditures, they would be in that, that expense paying the county? But when we're, this comparison is millage rate plus assessments, non-ad valorem. This is ad valorem and non-ad valorem and a comparison of those. So.
Because I know from looking at different trim notices that people who live in the city of Sarasota pay a higher millage rate to the county than citizens of Northport do. And I'm assuming that's because of their fire and rescue services. So again, my question is, in their effective, when we compare the city of Sarasota to the city of Northport, is their effective rate net of what they pay to the county for fire and rescue? Or have we pulled that out of their county tax? Because otherwise, we're not comparing apples to apples here. You know what I'm saying?
If I could put it another way, the 3.1436 that is the effective millage rate here for the city of Sarasota does not include that fire rescue, which is billed to the city of Sarasota taxpayers separately by the county. So comparing the 6.3 effective rate Northport to city of Sarasota is an apples-to-oranges comparison. That's what she's trying to say.
Right. If you, as your previous assumption was that city of Sarasota residents pay a higher millage rate because of that.
To the county.
Contracting with the county.
Yes.
Then in that sense, it is included. Because we take, we start with their millage rate that they're charging citizens, and then we add any non-ad valorem assessments. If they don't have a fire and we don't add it, for us, we do add it. But in your example, that would be included in that higher rate of just the, the regular.
Is it included in the 3.14? No, it's not.
Not.
It's because I asked the question earlier, is our taxes to the county in Northport included in the 6.3? And you said no. So the city of Sarasota taxpayers are paying to the county for their fire rescue, separate and over and above that 3.1436. That's the point we're trying to make.
Let me give you an example, because you can't say that our police department is paid for by our millage because the cost of the police department is higher than the millage. We have other revenues to pay for it. So it's in there, but the entire cost of the police department and the fire department and the general fund aren't covered by that.
That's a good point, too.
So I would assume Sarasota's got a line item expense in their general fund that's payment for, to the county for fire services. So that would be part of what their regular millage would cover. It may not cover it all, just like ours does not cover police and fire and the general fund.
What's that? Oh, oh, one other question. Sorry. On slide six, taxable value in dollars. Do we have a general sense of what the average assessed value is for each municipality? I think it would be interesting to see that because I think there's a general sense of people here in the city that our assessed values have skyrocketed and that that's unique in terms of our region, state, and country. And that's not the case. So as our assessed values have gone up, the assessed values in Venice and the city of Sarasota and the county have also gone up. So you, just based on, I find this information fascinating because when you think of our population numbers and the size of our city and our taxable value is so low relative to the other municipalities in the county, that's a stunning number to me, a stunning number. And people really need to understand that because, ugh, I look at these numbers and I have to catch my breath. That's it.
I don't think we have their average. Right. Okay, I think we're on slide 12. Let's get out of effective millage rate, please. Yes, one more. There we go. All right. Yes, these are our, yeah, right, correct. So here are the cities, and we talk about our FTEs. And this slide shows the number of citizens per employee. And in this chart, the higher the better, because the higher your number is, it means that the better efficiency that you have based on your population. And 122 is the average. We're below the average at 98. But you'll see how that relates back to our growth in a few more slides. But the first thing that people are going to say, first thing I would say is if you're looking to make a severe cost reduction in your budget, you're going to look at your people. How many people do you have? Are, are, do you have too many people? And are they either efficient or working the programs as you believe they should and as we think they should? So this chart kind of shows that we are, we're below being where we were at, where we should be as far as number of employees. But it's not a number that we're sitting here saying, oh, we've got to get up to 122. That's not what we're saying. When you look at our population and how we are growing in a, you know, a couple more slides, you're going to see that we are in alignment with what our population says. The next slide shows you a bar graph. The next slide shows you a bar graph. Yeah, same as the last, just in a different format where you can see the growth curve from our FTE to higher FTEs in different areas that are comparable to the city of Northport. The next slide is a line graph that shows what I'm referring to. You can look and you can see, you see towards the end of the first third, you see the blue line, which is the total of number of FTEs. And the green line represents population. You can see that during the recession, our FTEs were a little bit out of line from where our population was. And then you can see it went down. And look how long it took for us to get back up to that same level. It was about six or seven years after the recession happened to bring those people back. And when they brought them back, our population grew at the same time. And that's how the line of the population and the FTE came back into alignment together. And look at where they are now. Our, our population has exceeded our FTE count, which puts it back in alignment to where, a better alignment to where it should be. I don't think it'll ever be perfect and I don't want to act like it is. But when people say, and people need to understand that our FTE count is in alignment with our population and our growth, we believe that it is. As we talk about the FTEs and what we're going to propose this year, we know that public safety needs their FTEs. Police, if you may recall, we, we did not give them their full request last year. And we need to help them get right sized this year. I don't want to put us too far behind that curve. Most of you were here when the consultant gave us that report that said we needed to add it, we needed to add X number of FTEs per year. Last year, we didn't do it because of the same situation we're going through now, challenging times. So we're not going to probably do it fully again this year. But we're going to, we need to stay close enough to it so that we don't create a hole for ourselves. And that's my goal. And while we know police and fire need FTEs, there are other offices that need FTEs as well. But based on the strategic hiring initiative that we're going to put into place, as people leave the organization due to attrition or other reasons, we will then scrutinize those positions and see if they need to be rehired or can we reallocate them to other departments that may not get their FTE through this budget. We're not going to be able to get everything through this budget. So we're going to have to be very careful on what we present to you. But we're working on it to make sure that we put you in a position to make the best decision for the situation that we have.
Got a question from Commissioner Petro.
Yeah.
Going two slides back.
One more. That one?
Yes. So can you explain the slide?
Yes, sir, we can.
So what these numbers represent is the number of citizens per employee of that government. So for Deltona's, the first one that stands out, there's 227 citizens per employee of Deltona. So you can see us down at 98 citizens per employee there in the middle. The average of all these comparable, these are cities that are comparable to us in population size, average income, price of a home, things like that. The average of all of these, including us, is 122 citizens per employee.
And I didn't understand it, but I just wanted to make sure the public understands that. How did you get these numbers? Did you call, verify these numbers or you went online? Or how would you, how would you know how many employees Fort Myers has?
So unfortunately for the 25 numbers, we did have to call. We went online and looked to see if we could find them online. And then we had to call a few of them because that's so recent that all of the numbers aren't out there. We can pull 24 data from a lot of different websites coming from. My gosh. Economic and Democratic Research Office and a number of other locations. But 25, we do have to collect manually.
And specifically for the city of Fort Myers, how many employees, did you call them? How many employees they have? Or did you find it online or? Because I'm asking, city of Fort Myers is very comparable in the population size to our city. As a matter of fact, they have slightly more. I believe they were.
I thought they were a lot more.
They're about 97,000. So I just want to compare apples to apples.
Well, again, those numbers are normalized because, you know, we're dividing number of citizens by the number of employees.
The population is similar to our population.
So it really wouldn't matter.
Yeah, 100,780. The population.
And the employees?
The employees. 1,106.
We have ours is, we have, we have 90.
At this time, 940 for us.
The numbers are, which is why our 98 compares to their 91.
And how did you get the number of employees from them? Did you call them or?
Fort Myers, I believe we found that online.
It's interesting, I'm asking. I met two of their councilmen, councilwoman. They told me that their size of, the number of employees is around 7 plus, 700 plus. Yet their population is higher than ours.
They may have been quoting general fund employees. It may have been not an updated number. But this is from their finance online documents.
I was just, I was curious how, because I want to compare the city of Fort Myers to ours.
I'll fill their stuff and see if I can find the 700.
Well, if you Google it, it says they have approximately 1,000 employees.
Yes.
And that's just coming straight without going into any document. And that's just, of course, what it comes, refers to the internet. But I think 700 is not the most accurate number for their employees to compare, if we're comparing an apple to an apple of total employees.
Even in 24, they had 1,094 employees. And that's reported to Economic and Democratic Research and yeah, all of their act for reporting has, has those numbers.
Thank you. I don't want to take any more time, but thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Langton.
When we use the term citizen, do we mean residence? Or do we mean citizens? So if we have people living in the city of Northport who are here on visas or green cards, are they included in that number?
Yeah.
Right.
If, if they have second homes and they're not, they're Bieber numbers, correct?
I know someone who knows.
I always prefer residents to citizens, but.
Good afternoon. Elena Wright, Director of Development Services. It is based on the U.S. Census figures in American Community Survey.
Okay.
A little different. It's also, we also, the state of Florida looks at it based on an average number of household size. So that is updated every year. We do work with Bieber every year on those numbers. But it is based generally on the average number of people in a household, whether it's single family apartment.
Okay, so people doubling up or sponsoring people or none of that gets counted?
If, if we have 10 people living in one house, it's not going, it's not necessarily going to capture that if those people are not reported on a census or survey.
So do we acknowledge that some groups are really undercounted in terms of census, particularly the last one? Because of the political context that that census?
It's possible, and every jurisdiction faces this.
Right.
Unreported residents within the boundaries. But the state of Florida does look at average household sizes. And the census looks at that as well.
Right.
The numbers are not going to be perfect. But it is the best, it's the closest we can get.
Right. I won't belabor it, but I just think it's, it's a good point to make that we provide services to a broader audience than a strict definition of citizen. That's the only point I want to make. And I'm sure the homeless aren't counted in that, right?
No, but the, the city, the police department and such services do get general counts of the number of housed individuals in the city.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
I want to ask a quick question about rental apartment complexes. How, would you go by the unit number or?
The, the census and the state use an average number of residents per unit as an average. So they do have calculations that will say, you know, certain size apartments have, generally have an average of X number of residents living in those. So they do capture all of the people who are living in apartments as well as the single family homes.
We have a few complexes that were built just recently. I mean, the census is so.
But we do, we do work with the state on updating our population numbers every year. And we do account for the new construction. So we look at single family homes and apartment units that are CO'd within the previous year. And we adjust our population numbers to include those units.
What about, what about driver's licenses? When people get, when, when they move in, they have to change their license. So they would be probably, is that a more accurate number?
That we've really got to look at that. A lot of people who may live here a part of the year don't have their licenses here. They have them somewhere else. So we, that's why we go by household size. We go by actual units on the ground. Because they may be here five months out of the year and maintain their driver's license in a different state.
If I may, just a quick related question to Commissioner Petro. Do we have a rough idea of our population growth? How many are coming from out of state needing a new license versus those that are moving within state? That might help a little bit.
There are migration studies that, that indicate generally. I don't have those figures in front of me, but that's something that we could look at as far as how many percentages coming from out of state versus in state. I know our out of state migration has been significant over the last three years, three to five years, yes.
U-Haul probably knows.
U-Haul has some good numbers. But we, there are, those are, numbers are out there. We could, we could definitely.
Thank you. I'm good.
Move it along.
All right. Next slide we're going to talk about are all funds. As it relates to our, our union contracts, our city personnel, we talked about utilizing 3.5 salary growth for position, level of service and personnel. PBA increase of approximately 3 to 6%. Asme will receive 2.5% market adjustment and a 2% increase based upon merit. The IAFF employees receive increases based on a professional development plan and the salary growth of 2.5% for cost of living adjustment for existing levels of service as well. The costs associated with capital projects also includes ongoing staffing, operating costs and maintenance. Next slide is sort of a summary that shows a few of the big key drivers.
Commissioner Langton has a question.
I have a quick question just on, on that previous slide. Our merit increases, I'm assuming they're tied to the overall rating of an employee?
Correct.
So I guess what I'm driving to, if someone, and I always have to reverse it in my mind. One is, five is the best or one is the best?
Five is the best.
Five is the best, okay. So if someone's a three, do they get a merit? If someone's a four, do they get 1%? If someone's a five, do they get 2%? Like, how is it tied to performance, those merit increases?
It does go down. I don't know exactly the point where it drops to a whole.
To zero.
Percentage difference, if you're a five, a four to five, you get a percentage. If you're three to four, you get a percentage of two to three. All within those percentages, that's how the percentage is determined.
Because I would hope someone rated less than three wouldn't get a merit increase, right?
So it's 4% in that four to five range. I mentioned 3.5% from 3.5 to 4.9 and 3% increase from, if you're rated from a three to a 3.5.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Yes. Okay. All right. The general fund changes here that we referenced for 3.5, 2.6 is 2.5 million dollars for merit and union salary increases. CPI is less than a 2.5% to only 1.2 million dollars. Health insurance, increase of $730,000. And operating costs and stationary increase of 1.7 million dollars, leaving over 6.2 million dollars. I think this is the slide that the mayor referenced earlier when he talked about their taxable value number sort of coming off of that and leaving us with a deficit. And while the property tax isn't the only revenue that we have, it is the largest one that comes into that fund. So there will have to be adjustments made to allow for the gap or the balance of that expense total to the revenue.
A question for you. In the calculation of the 6.2 million for each of those categories, is there, for unfilled positions, would the costs, including, you know, here we're talking increases in health insurance, these are changes to the general fund, are unfilled positions included in these numbers?
Yes, they are. Because we would assume that they'll get filled.
Exactly. Okay, good. Okay, that's good to know.
Okay, all right. We all keep going. The next, our, the next slides are just sort of to remind everyone what the strategic pillars are and just touch on them briefly as we want to make sure that your particular decision making and direction are related to the outcomes that you want to see from your pillars. As we go through the first one, talks about safe community. I think that was pretty straightforward. We know that our public safety is in this pillar and makes up the bulk of it. And I, I never want to rank pillars against each other or if we don't have to. But I would find it very easy to make an argument that if our community does not feel safe, our quality of life will be in jeopardy. They need to feel safe. They need to know that services will arrive at them on time based on their needs. And I don't think, I need to overstate how critical that is. As we go to the next pillar, and we talk about quality of life, we always want to make sure that people have the right sort of activities and amenities to want to be in our city. I think if we jeopardize that too much, then it messes up the growth factor that I mentioned earlier. Making sure that we stay on these lists that we're on and getting the recognition that we get and the accreditations that, the departments that are tied to this particular pillar receive. We want to keep those at the highest level. We talked about economic development, growth and management as the next pillar. And this one has been sort of a priority ever since I've been here for the last three years. And knowing that we are going to see the long-term benefits of this growth is just, you're starting to see some of the pieces come together. And it's, it's, it's looked good based on the priority the commission has given and the resources that you dedicated to this particular pillar. It was a lot less when I first got here. You got, you as a board have supported economic development because that was the vision that you had for the city to grow in. The environmental, resilience and sustainability pillar, you also have dedicated resources to that in natural resource division through the tree fund and your regulations and policies that allow us to capture that revenue and then put it back into the city. That's, that's allowed Elena Wright and Development Services to be very productive in improving our community and making sure that we focus on economic development but never lose sight of the environment and the wildlife. That is a huge characteristic of the city of Northport. Next pillar would be infrastructure and facilities and. Next pillar would be infrastructure and facilities integrity. This is one where deferred maintenance has been a norm for a lot of municipalities. We are not different. What we want to focus on now, particularly for this one, is the referendum questions that we have that will help us get some of that done. And if you think about it from the standpoint of all the infrastructure that we have in the city and how our public work team is able to do a lot with what they have, the ask for the citizens has been very minimal over the past recent memory. We need to be able to keep up with that. So as revenue grows in this city, we have to put it back into our infrastructure. We have to make sure that the growth of the city doesn't harm our roads and our buildings and our abilities, our ability to take care of the needs of our citizens. So that is a very challenging pillar, but I think we're dedicated to make sure that we don't defer maintenance any more than we have to. And we can go to the next slide. The last slide is governance, which is important so that we give the best product to the people. We want to make sure that they have, they have the highest level of service. Now, I do, I would say that, you know, if we had a new ERP system, which I know Enterprise Resource Planning System, that would make us better, but it is really very expensive. And I think I told you last year, it costs a lot of money and it takes a lot of time. So this year, most likely, we just need to do some more deeper dive into what it looks like and bring you back more information as opposed to trying to carve that out and put it into our budget this year. I just don't think that we can handle that. I don't want it to get lost because I want it to be the most efficient and using technology the best way that we can, but I don't, I just don't see it in this year's budget to change. We are able to add different modules to the system that we have, so we might explore looking into those things so that we can make ourselves better without sort of creating a whole new system.
Commissioner Langdon.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I'm very glad to hear you say that, City Manager. I'm a big supporter of the ERP systems because they can drive a lot of efficiencies. But this year, given our environment and we're potentially facing an economic downturn, I agree with you. So I'm really glad to hear you say that.
Yes, it was painful to say, but it is, it is the reality of what we're going through. And speaking of efficiencies, someone just mentioned recently, I think it was Commissioner Petro, we talked about during the city fee schedule last week, efficiencies being examined as well as the fees being examined. We do have a plan to have a third party sort of look at some of our efficiencies. I believe, and it's natural because our people are so close to what they're doing, that we may not see all of the inefficiencies that may be there. So bringing someone in to help us on a very scheduled timeframe will allow us over, hopefully over the course of this next year, to answer some of those questions that we can't physically show you ourselves. Because it's easy for us to say, yes, we need six people to do this particular task, and someone else might come in and say, well, you know what? Here's how you can do it with four. You know, so I think that we need that, and the best way that we, as a city staff, get your particular confidence is normally through a third-party independent who can verify either what we're doing right or wrong. Same way with the city fee study. There was a lot in there that they said needed to change, and some needed to stay the same, and some needed to go away. But that's what you need to make sure, you need that sort of extra eyes and ears on your information. So we're going to try to get some of that done, back to your point from last week. Final pillar is disaster response and recovery management. This one really speaks for itself. We really need to refer in the past so that we can all have that extra sense of security that we won't be harmed if we have multiple hurricanes that stretch our resources. That's always going to be a priority. The preservation of life is priority number one, and it's the highest level of duty that we can provide to the city. As you look at the next slide, which is the adoption of the budget by pillar, you can see as no surprise that our largest one is safe community. Oh, excuse me, infrastructure and facilities because of the cost of it, but ones that you definitely have a direct influence on is safe community. And once we make sure that our people are safe, then we can add everything else into our mix. And as you can see, the different pillars represent 16% for good governance, 4.4% quality of life, economic is 1.1, and environmental resiliency is 7.2.
Before we go past that slide.
Yes, sir.
You know, just to, you ran us through the percentages, but looking at the dollars, we spend safe community almost $89 million to keep our city safe. Probably a darn good investment. Quality of life, quality of life does contain parks and wrecks, right? That's where parks and wrecks, that is 4.4% of our total budget or $12 million. Economic development, $3 million. Environmental resilience, $20 million. Infrastructure, $110 million. And good governance, $45.5 million. Just as we look at where we might get the biggest bang for our buck if we're looking to doze ourselves or tighten our belts or whatever you might want to call it, those are, this is a great chart to look at because it shows you where the money sits. Thank you.
Absolutely. Where we are, we are the fiscal year 25 adopted by the general fund. As you can see, safe community represents 63% of that or $54 million, followed by the good governance pillar of $17.6 million or 20%. Infrastructure is 4% of the general fund, and you have economic development at 3% and quality of life of 10% of the general fund, which is roughly $8.6 million. Next slide will get us to a conversation that we want to pause on for one moment. If you recall, I know you recall, because of the board, you gave us the assignment to go help figure out how to handle the parking on 41 that the Amory Oyster Bar, I'm not going to say they created it because I don't want to put it all on them, but we're very glad to have that restaurant there, and so are a lot of other people in this city. And, you know, they're doing great business there. But if you look at that entire corridor on both sides of the road, it's been examined for several years on how to make it sort of better so that people can navigate through it more easily. So we are working on that. Bring back to you, see how you would like to direct us. But as we talk about it and we look at some of the information that we received, design is at 60%, and we're talking about 163 parking spots at a cost of just over a little of $2 million. Now, ideally, that is not a situation that the city would undertake because if you do it there for this particular area, you would be doing it for other areas where the private business, businesses and owners could be taking a more responsibility. I've heard it mentioned that you could do paid parking there, put some meters in there, you know, you could, there's some things that you could do to be creative, but what I would say is, I'm pretty sure you might have some feedback based on this and maybe an update, we just want to make sure that they know that we are willing participant in helping problem solve for an issue that we all share. And I think that's what you as a board have done, and I think that's what you probably would tell us as a staff to continue to do.
I think this project too, if I recall, there was $300,000, $400,000 that came in via grant monies that were redeployed elsewhere. So there was a chunk of money at some point devoted to this project which got used somewhere else in the city. I believe it was grant money, maybe it was cert tax money. I thought it was grant money. But, you know, that's just something we need to consider when we look at, you know, is this a city expense or not a city expense? And, you know, what we ask potential businesses to partner up with us on. But anyway, this is certainly, of all the areas I know in the city, this is one area that needs some serious addressing, but.
As we get further down the road of information, we'll make this a workshop topic, and we'll bring it back and you can spend more time on it. And more than likely, some of those business owners will either contact you before then or come in during that meeting and have some feedback with you as well. I just know it's a big topic, and I know that everyone sees it, and we need to solve for it together. Next slide, funding consideration. So we, a consultant has been contacted to evaluate special assessment possibility. The report is being finalized. We should have it soon. Consultant has identified methodologies for a special assessment to businesses that directly benefit from that parking that we talked about on 41. There has to be some sort of method in order to properly allocate who's responsible for how much. As you can imagine, that's what they would want because they don't want to pay for more than their business is getting. And of course, we would all say that's fair, but I don't think that there's any surprise right there. But the annual impacts the owners can, let's see, can range from $200,000, excuse me, $200 for a small business or $35,000 for a large business. There has to be some sort of balance there that I think will be fair for everyone to be able to live with as we sort of bring that forward. When that consultant report is done, again, that'll help follow us up with the workshop topic. You'll be able to discuss it further.
Yeah, it may, I mean, this, this takes us very close to a larger conversation with regard to paid parking and parking issues throughout the city because we're going to reach that point where we're going to need to look at and the technologies out there that are really interesting and attractive, which provides you the opportunity without a lot of infrastructure improvement to create paid parking on streets and other areas. So it's sooner or later going to be a topic.
True. It would be new for the city, but I think that at some point, like you said, you're going to have to, you're going to have to do it because that's just the way that it is. You only have so much space, and you got to make sure you do it the right way. Totally agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Next slide, here we have considerations. So on this slide originally, my apologies, the second bullet mirrored the first bullet and said, do you want a military increase and do you want to consider a military increase?
Truly.
Right. Mentally, I think your city manager did not want to do a decrease, but, you know, that, it has been changed, and like I said, we'll make sure the clerk, Madam clerk, has the correct information. But these are questions that we need to discuss today. A military increase, I'm fairly certain, now that is, that is a city manager's increase on the same premise that you've heard me say for the three years that I've been here. We've been at the same military for five years. Our city is growing. We have costs, we have needs. I'm always going to advocate for those costs. I do believe that we, we have a population that would, would be more satisfied with a small incremental consistent increase as opposed to staying flat and then jumping it up to a number that causes concern, or possibly taking it down and then having to jump it back up to a number that causes concern. That is, that is staff's opinion, but there are benefits of all three, to be honest with you. Whether you increase it, leave it the same, or you decrease it, there's pros and cons. But you as a board, we're looking for that direction for you to say, what would you like for us to include in the budget proposals that we bring back to you in the upcoming months? If you want us to explore what a decrease looks like, then we'll give you options for that, if you, or how much you want it to go down. If you want it to increase, we'll bring you those back. If you want it to stay the same, we can do that as well. But I think publicly and during the budget process kickoff, it's important that you sort of explore the numbers of.
Before you jump, I hit my button first, and I'd like to lead with it.
Excuse me, Ms. Mayor, if I may, with all respect, I have a lot to say on this topic. I would suggest we time ourselves as we move into this.
Yeah, I mean, it's reasonable. Let's try to keep it to between five and 10 minutes, you know, a commissioner, but I'm not going to take that long, I can tell you that. You know, I, I truly believe we ought to give serious consideration to cutting the property tax military. I've said it before, and I'll say it again. The PFM analysis has shown that we are going to see some appreciation in revenues primarily in the five-year range out. And, you know, that is a few years from now. We're also seeing healthy population growth, both residentially and commercially, and that is contributing to additional revenue. That number is quoted of 7.5, I think are going to be more like 10, 12, 13% driven to an extent by, by some of this growth. I think we're going to see revenue pickups, and I think that, at the same time, we're facing some serious challenges, and, and they're taking the form of a May 13 referendum election, and we're asking people to assess themselves for new police headquarters. We need a solid waste transfer station, which makes enormous sense and is cost-effective. We have wastewater treatment plant that's broken that needs fixing. We don't have much choice. We're asking citizens to sacrifice, and I personally feel that when you look at the amount of money that this city takes in, in a strategic and a surgical way, we can find $2 to $3 million, which theoretically could equate to a, to a nice mileage rate reduction. And we should be willing to cut and tighten our belt in order to do this and put some money back. If we're asking the average citizen, say, to pay $150 extra a year for police headquarters, inclusive of maybe these other two projects, let's just pick that number, and we can give them back 25 to 30% of that, yes, net, they're paying more, but if you ask them, well, gee, would you rather me keep that $50 or $60? They would say, no, give it to me. And, and I think that it's important that as a city, I find it hard to look at these numbers on that graph and the amount of money we spend in each of the pillars, and I, and it's hard for me to realize that we can't find the money we need. I have a quick question. What, for finance, what is the, what is the number of tax-paying properties in the city?
What is the number of tax-paying properties in the city?
35,000, 40,000, 50,000?
Yeah.
You know, rough ballpark?
I wouldn't want to hazard.
Okay, because, I mean, in trying to determine how much to cut the budget to translate it into a $50, $60 give back to a citizen who has an average property assessed value of $300,000, you know, that's the kind of number I think is a healthy number. If it's, if there's 35,000 paying properties, then, you know, it's about 2.1 million and it's about a 5% reduction in the mileage rate. Takes it down from 3.7667 to about 3.65. It's a healthy drop, and the argument that, gee, would we have to raise it again next year or the year after? I say no. I wouldn't do it if I thought we couldn't hold the line until revenues and growth catches up with us. And, and, you know, I don't see this as a one-year, oh, quick giveaway. I think that we're asking citizens to make a commitment. They're going to have to pay year after year for these projects, and so the cut should be flat. I mean, I like to take this number down, and, you know, I really would love to hear what everybody else has to say on this commission, so at that, I'm not going to go on and on, but, you know, that at least sets the tone of where I think we ought to be. Hello, Commissioners? Commissioner Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I have very strong feelings on this subject as well. And this city has so many infrastructure and facility needs and other issues. I mean, we looked at the numbers of, you know, in terms of the tax burden per resident where like the lowest of the county and all the municipalities in the county. And personally, I think cutting the mileage rate in anticipation of future revenues, particularly when financial experts are signaling an increased potential of a recession, is very unwise. We have been firm about not increasing the mileage rate, and we've been blessed by rapidly increasing assessed value. And so we were able to do a lot of right sizing, and that allowed us to do it. But I think we are at the point where we need to take a hard look at what we're doing. And when I talk to people around this city about. look at what we're doing, and when I talk to people around this city about increasing or decreasing the millage rate, what I hear is, is a couple things, one is, you've been talking about our financial challenges and all the infrastructure needs we have, and having to trade off one project for another, because we don't have sufficient revenue to fund them all, and now you're cutting the millage rate? Were you pulling my leg?
I don't know who you're talking to.
Number one, no, well, certainly not people in Wallen Park, and then two.
Certainly not people in this legacy Northport either.
With respect, Mayor, I think you gave me the floor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, um, and, and I think what people tell me they want to do is, they wanna see us manage our expenses, they wanna see us be efficient, I, I don't think anyone wants a service cut in any area, including parks, that was never my intention in my earlier conversations, but I think what people do wanna see is that we're being as efficient as we can be in the delivery of those services, so I think at this particular point in time, decreasing the millage rate is unwise, and I think it potentially delivers a message to the community that adds confusion to the conversation, if we have so many needs, if, if we need to borrow to start satisfying some of those needs, why are you cutting the millage rate?
Uh, I know Commissioner Emrich, but I would like to respond to that, because, um, you know, all the people I talk to in this city are concerned about the fact that every time they turn around, someone's reaching in their pockets for more money, whether it's the city, whether it's the county, whether it's the state, whether it's the federal government, the bottom line is people's pocketbooks are hurting, it's costing everybody more, okay, and when we look at two hundred and fifty to three hundred million dollars that this city collects in tax revenues, it is inconceivable to me that we can't find two, three million dollars and give it back, and when it comes to, you know, shouldn't we redeploy it elsewhere, we should have been doing that anyway, if our prioritizations are off, then that's what we should have been doing right along, so I believe it's time to help the citizens, all this other talk about efficiencies and this and that and all the rest is all well and good, but what's it doing for the average citizen who has to fork up more money? And this year, they will be asked to fork up more money, if we're trying to get these three projects passed, I think we ought to sacrifice as the city government too, because if they don't pass, we're not asking them, should we do these projects, we're not asking, should we build the police headquarters, or should we build a waste, you know, treat, a solid waste treatment plant, or are we gonna fix the water treatment, we already made those decisions, if these referendums fail, we're gonna do these projects, because we already voted to do them, and it's gonna cost all us taxpayers more money, so if we're asking them to support these, to me, it's the perfect time to do something and give back, look at the numbers, look at that chart, look at the money we spent for good governance, do you really think that our citizens wouldn't be willing to sacrifice a little good governance, okay, or somewhere else in this massive budget, I mean, I, I find it extremely difficult, the states send the message, read the tea leaves, okay, read the tea leaves out there, governments are looking at controlling property taxes, reducing them, eliminating them, why? Because people are suffering, how do we be indifferent to that? It's, it's, it's inconceivable to me, we can't find two, three million dollars in this, but, not us, staff, staff can do it, this is what they're good at, they can look at their budget strategically, surgically, and do it, if we just say we're leaving it the same, oh, okay, and we're gonna see what happens come May thirteenth. Vice Mayor. Oh, okay, um, I have no issues with looking at reducing the millage rate, but I do not want that to be used as a tool from this dais at this point, because it is premature on what's gonna happen in the referendum, I don't want promises or statements made saying, well, if you pass the referendum, we're gonna roll back the millage rate, because we haven't got to the point on what the budget is, so that gets discussed in the future. Keeping the millage rate at the current expense right now means that down the road, we're not gonna look at Facebook out there saying we're raising it thirty-five percent again, and having everybody come down when it was actually only a thirteen percent increase. If we take it back somewhere down the road, it will, will have to go back up, how drastic, I have no clue, if you keep it steady, then you're looking at minor increments down the road, but again, I'm looking, willing to look at those numbers to see when they come in, to do a slight rollback on that, but I've already had one-on-ones with City Manager Fletcher, and, and my perspective was, we need to look at our spending out there on, oh, we may not need this equipment this year, we may not need these open positions this year, we may not need X, Y, and Z, and cut our belt and tighten our belt at that level, bring those numbers back, also bring back the numbers on the rollback, how much do we need to get to this point, and where do we need to save, but I think cutting the budget internally, and again, I am not on the cutting the parks and rec manwagon, for the record, that is an amenity, it is for the city, but elsewhere, we may not need ten mowers this year, and we may not need five dump trucks, and I'm not picking on Chuck, sorry, but it's, we may not need that stuff for another year or two years, or get in with grant programs to see if we can get some of that stuff acquired, but for right now, let's see where we're at, where that leads us, let's see where taking a little bit away on the millage rate leads us, and see what those numbers come out, it's, like I said, we're, we're premature right now, do we wanna look into these things? Absolutely, we wanna see all the angles, can we make a decision on which route we're taking, not till we have those numbers, and not till we have those discussions, so that's basically where I'm at, that's all I have, Mayor. Mr. Langdon?
Um, I just wanna check with the two newer Commissioners, this is my second round, either of you want to go first, or you're just kinda spectators? Well, I just wanna give them the opportunity, uh, just quickly, I, I just wanna put out there that I agree with Commissioner Emrich, I mean, with, with very conservative at, um, assessment appreciation at seven point five, if it winds up being fifteen percent, I doubt that very much, then maybe a, a small rollback might be doable in, in the context of things, but highly unlikely that's gonna happen. Also, we need to keep in mind that if the direction this body gives to staff is to hold expenses constant, two thousand five to two thousand six, given that our city is growing, that's actually a cut, so we need to keep that in mind as well, as one of the options we might pick. I also want to point out that Commissioner McDowell, I did that again, Duval, the names are too similar.
I do, yeah.
Commissioner Duval actually had an interesting idea of where we might cut some expenses, you know, the service fee that we place on FPL, I don't know what our districts are planning to do this year, maybe we can hold the line there, or adjust down a little bit there, so, um, I, I'm sort of, it's sort of premature to really talk about an increase or a decrease at this point.
City Manager?
Oh, yes, so, um, the, the, be that, uh, Commissioner Duval was, is reducing the revenue that we get as, so, and if FPL goes up in their price, as me and Commissioner Duval talked about, I can see that correlation between the revenue, the expense that they're charging going up, and our revenue going down to keep the number somewhat the same, because I think Commissioner Duval's point was, we don't necessarily have to profit on them raising their price up, to, back to Commissioner Stokes' point of, everyone's hurting in some way, and if we can do what we can, we can do what we can, if there, if there's a way to put this screen up now, please, IT, I just wanted to show you from our budget book, sort of the millage rate history that's in here over the last ten years, and as you can see, it, it was reduced from sixteen to seventeen, and then it went back up in twenty, and then it was reduced again in twenty-one to where it is right now, so, I mean, it, it is very possible that if it goes down, it's going to come back up at some point in time to make up for that particular movement, unless the money from the ULDC does come in, and in my mind, if you take that approach, you are betting on yourselves, you're saying that we take the ULDC, that money's gonna come in, it's going to help us in some shape, form, or fashion, whatever you decide to put that money to, you might use it for infrastructure that you don't need to go out to the people and ask for, um, borrowing authority, it may come in the sense of, now you have money to complete your ERP, and you don't have to worry about that, that, we, we are, we are, we are really investing in ourselves and our future by that ULDC, so that is going to have a benefit to the city at some point in the very near future.
And, and to your point, City Manager, the fact that we're making an investment in that growth, and have done an enormous amount of work and expenditure towards that growth, that anticipated revenue growth, um, it's for that reason that I wonder, why shouldn't we bet on that as well, when we turn around and give our citizens a little bit of relief? And I don't necessarily agree that cutting the millage rate means it has to go back up, the whole idea of everything we have been trying to do here for the past two commissions has been to right-size and direct this city towards its, its rapid growth, all the work, the ULDC rewrite, all the efforts to, to address infrastructure, is all for the purpose of handling what we anticipate to be healthy growth, both residentially and commercially in this city, and during these next couple of years, when it is of the greatest pressure on our citizens, we're asking them to step up now, I, I just feel as if, what is the city government doing to show that it's making that same sacrifice? I don't see us making that same sacrifice, we have been spending money here, there, and everywhere for the last handful of years to address this growth coming, and, and when does the citizens get a break? You know, we can be more efficient, we can save money, we can cut costs, but if we don't put it back in the citizens' pockets to some degree, how is it benefiting them? Anyway.
One, one update, we have seventy-eight, four hundred and thirty, four hundred and thirty-four parcels.
Seventy-eight, okay, that's pretty good, so we'll take.
Number again, I'm sorry.
Seventy-eight or thirty-four.
So B, you know, to address that drop I was talking about, it's probably closer to three million dollars in cuts to do it, three million, three point five million dollars out of, out of a two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy million dollar budget, that's, that's what, if we passed it back, that's what we would be looking for, correct?
My second thing was, I, I heard you, you just said that, you know, what are we doing in order to help them and reduce that number or that impact on them, but the last years I've been here, we've left multiple millions of dollars out of our budget that we needed or would have liked into our budget, now, what does that mean, because you still are providing good and great services all around here without that money? Yes, that's because we could always do better, and we're always trying to do better, so the, the sentiment is exactly what you just said, people, people don't see the pain that we've done and dealt with, because they're still receiving all this great level of service, and now, what I'm saying is, that level of service is in the conversation of, you have us as a staff, you collectively have us as a staff looking at everything now, so as we come up on this tight point that we're looking at, services are gonna be in those conversations, and we're gonna have to make some tough choices.
And, and to round out my comments, you know, absolutely, I have watched this city government, commissions even before I got on and now, making huge strides in being better at, at, at being the best stewards of, of our citizens' tax dollars, I don't mean to say we don't, I just mean to say that for the average citizen, they have, nobody's put money back in their pocket, nobody, not the federal government, the state, the county, or this city, if we can do that, that's great, and I say, I'm not looking to vote, this is a workshop, what I'd like to see is staff look at this possibility, look at what would be involved, you said, any reductions that are passed back to the citizens are gonna come with a cost, a cost in services, quality, whatever, we need to understand that so we can balance it and weigh it, that's all I'm asking for here, I'd like to see that, I think to simply adopt the mindset, same old, same old, I, I, I would wanna see, could we do this, I don't know if we can do this yet, like Vice Mayor said, you know, but certainly I'd like to see where staff, you're the experts, I don't wanna sit here as Commissioner and cherry pick where we're gonna cut the budget, we have no right to sit here and decide it should be parks and recs, or, or infrastructure, or public works, we don't have that expertise nor that knowledge, it is not our job, it is staff's job to figure it out, if we give a direction, look at what it would take to cut three million out of the budget and reduce our millage rate by, you know, a, a three to five percent rate, figure it out, come back, if it's too painful, then commission has to make that tough decision, but it's our decision to make, but we need to give direction, that's all I'm looking for out of this, I do not want to dismiss the possibility of doing this, because I think we should look at it, and I think our citizens deserve, deserve it, they deserve us taking a hard look at this, that's all. Mr. Langdon?
Uh, just very quickly, um, if City Manager had gone back further in our millage rate prior to two thousand and eight, our millage rate was five point one percent, so just for historical context, our residents have been enjoying reduced taxes for fifteen years or more now, so just a point.
Commissioner Petro?
Well, just a few things, taking into account the current political environment on the state and federal level, probably on the county level as well, we have to do some sacrifices as well, um, and being a new on the commission board, coming from a business side, you know, when there are things that needs to be looked into, you not only look into the revenue side, which governments typically do, they, they find the ways to somehow raise revenues, as opposed to cutting the expenses, so, um, I do believe that we do have to look into the efficiency study or whatever, and soon, the sooner the better, um, because I think we can eliminate a lot of, if, uh, dis, a lot of ineffective stuff, yes, and, but to keep expenses at the same level is probably not the best idea, especially when we want to ask the, the residents to approve a lot of expenses, to, to improve, um, the borrowing questions that we're gonna present to them, and I think it's, it is wise to look into all the options, and I agree with the, the Mayor, we have to give back to the citizens, to the residents of our city, we, I know it's gonna be painful, but, you know, being on the diet is not really a pleasant experience, a pleasant, um, procedure, I, I, I don't know how to say it, but if you've been on a diet, it's really painful, to say the least, especially if you want.
That's a good point.
But if you, if you look, if you, if you, uh, if you're looking to, to become more attractive, and, you know, there are sacrifices, so we have to sacrifice some things, and, you know, I'm not a, really, uh, in favor of cutting anybody's jobs, or, but we do really have to look at, you know, overall picture. But we do really have to look at, you know, overall picture. Like the mayor said, it is the staff's responsibility to look at the, figure it out. Look at the inefficiencies even now before the study and see what we can improve with the city. What can we do? Instead of two inspectors going to the same job site, you know, doing two different inspections in the same field, send one inspector or whatever. And I'm, I'm not in the development office, but I think there are ways to, to make our city to be more efficient. And if we want more prosperity for the city, we gotta get all these three projects done, right? So we're asking the citizens to pitch in. What are we giving them in return?
If we keep it the pony, if we keep it high level for us, you know, the idea being to, to give direction, because this is a workshop. So, we're there to be a consensus to ask staff to look into this and take a hard look and see where you might be able to do it. You guys are the best at, at figuring this out. You know, it, it can come from any one of so many different areas, and maybe it will be too painful. Maybe it will, maybe there's a meeting in the middle somewhere. But, but I don't think it's unreasonable to ask staff at this point in time to, to look into this, because, you know, we're gonna be moving forward on this budget, and we, we need to get a feel for this, and, and, you know, see you.
We have, I, thank you for that discussion. I think we have enough to sort of go back, and I know what we need to do, and I had it in my mind. You might want to take a 10-minute, you know, no items, of vacant lot and parks and recs, and then we'll get you out of here, maybe a quick break?
Want to stay here for 10? Yes, you want to take a quick break? How do you guys feel? Take 10 minutes or-
Okay, absolutely. Oh. How would you try to be considered? No, absolutely, take a 10-minute break.
Yeah, let's stretch our legs, 10 minutes. Be back here at-
That was true, I'm covering up, or I got some work to do, I'll be with you.
Yeah.
Hey, Mayor.
The U.S. So, the third question, or next question on the slide is talking about the unimproved lot registration program. Director Ray has created a one-pager that I've handed out to all of you, and we'll make sure the clerk who has it as well gets it into the public record. But it, it is a page that sort of outlines the benefits and the questions that are still lingering if we want to do this program. So, the first says, well, what is it? It's the annual online registration for unimproved parcels. It collects current property owner information, requires a 24 emergency contact, includes an annual fee, and it provides relief to the general fund for code enforcement efforts. It benefits the general public by removing hazardous trees. It removes the financial and physical burden of homeowners dealing with nuisance and impinging growth, and eliminates reliance on the general fund. For unimproved property owners, it eliminates violation notices, magistrate hearings, and lien for covered issues. It eliminates the need for absentee property owners to secure local contractors and manage work long distance. Who could be exempt? Conservation property, government-owned property, lots that are already cleared and maintained, and other categories that the commission may deem appropriate. So, the goal here is currently, the lots that need improvement are being paid for through the services of code enforcement and other vendors now, and that is through taxpayer dollars. So everyone is sort of contributing to that cause. The, the goal that we're trying to achieve is to tie this expense directly back to those who are incurring the expense, and those are the vacant lot owners who should be taking care of their property so it does not impede on another property. In the past, before I was here, I, I'm under, if I understand correctly, we were doing the program a little bit differently, and then we just absorbed it all, and that's what we're doing right now. So this is a chance that we brought to you during last budget session to consider that we would like to either consider it further and bring it back to you with some details of some standard operating procedures of what it would look like during this budget process, or just stop this altogether and sort of move in a different direction. That's why it's on the list for budget consideration, and we're looking just to get your feedback on, yes or no, so to speak.
We've got a bunch of people who want to talk, I was up first. So, I would say you and I, City Manager, and I had discussions on this in our, my one-on-one today. And, you know, if we were to do this, and, and I like the idea of it, obviously, it makes sense in some respects, the devil's in the details. If we were to charge, I'm just gonna pick $100. If there's 40,000 lots out there, and a third, do I have of them aren't as maintained as they should be, so to speak? I mean, we're looking at 100 times 40,000, that's $4 million. Certainly, we, you know, that should be adequate to take care of them. My concern, as I raised to City Manager, was, would that not incentivize those folks who take care of their properties to not take care of their properties? It costs way more than $100 a year to take care of a property, an, an unimproved lot. I mean, it can cost $1,000 to drop a tree. So, why would I, if I have five or 10 lots, why wouldn't I just pay that $100 and say, let the city take care of it for me, even though I've been paying for it all along? Now, maybe that's our intent. If that's our intent, then okay, that's worth thinking about. We would generate enough money to be able to take care of all the unimproved lots in the city. It would be a benefit, they would look clean, they'd look nice, we would take control of them. But is that philosophically what we want to do here? Or should we charge so much to the lot owner that does not take care of his property, or her property, so that there would be plenty of money there and allow exemptions for anyone who does take care of their property? See, I say, there was discussion of having exemptions, but the truth is, why would you even bother? Why would you want to exempt yourself from something that you could pay 100 bucks for and have 1,000, 1,500, or I don't know, God knows how much savings? So it's, it's incentivizing good property owners to be bad property owners and pass it over to the city to take care of. That's what I was hung up with a little bit. Now, if we feel it's more important for the city to take care of them all, that, that's a subject to be discussed. Maybe that is what we want to do, I don't know. Personally, I would rather it be extremely, excruciatingly painful on those people who don't take care of their unimproved lots and give exemptions to those folks who do take care of them. And then, if somebody falls into disrepair, you can have, you fall out, you get assessed, it's gonna take you three years to earn back the right to get that exemption. So there's, you know, you gotta prove you're gonna take care of your lot. So there's some things we could do. But anyway, I'm done, Commissioner Langdon. I kicked off the conversation. Right away.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't know how many of us up here have the pleasure of having an unimproved lot next to their house. I do. So let me share my experiences. I live out east. When I first moved here almost 11 years ago, there were a lot of unimproved lots. And I, oh, let me share my experiences since I have an unimproved lot right next to my house. And I live out east, and when I moved here 10 years ago, there were a lot of unimproved lots in my immediate neighborhood. And I'll share my story, because it's not unique. A lot of my neighbors have found themselves in the same situation. Since I moved in, I've spent just about $1,000 trimming back trees that overhung my lawn, and I couldn't grow grass. So did I go after the owner of that property to pay for it? No, I could live with no grass, but I spent the money, out of my pocket, $1,000. In the past year, I've improved my property, I've put some plantings in along the, a couple of years ago, along the property line. There is so much impinging growth. I don't know what those vines are. You pull them up, and they have root balls that are this big, they're like alien spawn. And we have spent 58 hours, because I counted them, pulling weeds and digging up. And, and so, we've gone 15 feet into the neighboring property to try to protect my own property from that impinging growth. So, property owner, sue me for cleaning up your property. But, but now we've noticed, there are two trees, one pine tree and one palm tree that have been effectively choked off by those hideous vines. And now I have a dead pine tree that if it falls, will hit my house. This is the norm. I don't see charging to be any disincentive- I don't see charging to be any disincentive for anybody taking care of their unimproved lot. Trust me, in my neighborhood, no one ever did a thing on their unimproved lots, except for the people who live next to them. So, I understand your concern logically, that's where I would go to. In reality, it doesn't happen. So, someone's got to do it. And so, that's my story, and that's it.
Yes, Ray.
So, I can provide a little input. The vast, vast majority of people who already maintain their lots either live next door or across the street. They are in that immediate vicinity of the lot that they own, and they use that lot either for gardening or for recreation or just because they want it to look nice, because they see it every day. The vast, vast majority of lots are already not being maintained. So, those people who, and my gut tells me it would be very, very few who would say, "Well, I'm going to quit taking care of my lot because I don't have to now, I can just pay $100." Those people want to take care of their lots because they're using it and they're seeing it every day. This program would enable us to cease having to take code enforcement cases to a magistrate and putting liens on property for things like dead trees. It's intended for us to be able to stop doing that, which relieves staff of many, many hours of casework in the office, and instead, enabling us to spread that cost across a large number of lots so that we can afford to take care of those things when we have to go out and take five trees down or nine trees down next to somebody's single-family home. And it is a real serious issue. Our pine forest has been significantly impacted by the hurricanes that we've had and the stress that those storms have caused to, unfortunately, make them very susceptible to disease and pests. So, it's not something that's getting better, it's something that's getting worse. And as Commissioner Langdon mentioned, we have a serious issue with the proliferation of invasive plant species that are taking over some of these areas and choking the trees and causing them to die. So, it impacts not just property safety, it's going to, it will impact our wildlife, our habitat, everything else with these trees die, with the tree die-offs.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'm all for this program. I said it from when we first started doing it, because I remember when we cut off doing this a few years back and the problems that it caused. The main focus here is, I look at the current homeowners that are paying 10, 20 times the amount of taxes that a single lot owner's paying. When it's encringing on their property, what can they do about it? Well, the city has a plan, we're going to do it this way, like we used to, you call up, complain, and it gets done. The lot owner is charged for it. This is definitely a little bit different because it's pool money, a lot more easily accessible. And like you said, we're not dealing liens anymore because sometimes you'll never recoup that money when you're on liens, or you'll wait 20, 30 years before any monies come in. This is already available capital by doing this. The only rumbling that I've heard out there basically is the people that own multiple lots as an investment and trying to either develop it X or Y. To me, this is the cost of doing business. You've got 15 lots, that's 15 times the amount that you're going to get assessed for those lots. I'm sorry, but if you have one lot, you're paying $100, and that homeowner next to you has peace of mind to where a tree's not going to fall on their head or on their house or anything like that. So, for me, it's minor, and I'm all for this, 100%.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Petro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm against this program, like I stated before, and that's what makes us good because we're all different. We share different opinions and come to the mutual conclusion by the majority. But nevertheless, I want to make a few comments on this. It's a good program on the paper, really good. But once the people learn, they're never going to maintain anything, let alone visit their lots or, because they're going to know the city will take care of it. That's one thing. Second thing, I see this program to be overrun by the expenses. We, before going that way, I want to make, I want to make this point. Let's be honest with us, with ourselves. A lot of lots, vacant lots or unimproved lots are on the other side of 75. What are we doing? Are we going to maintain those lots? We just, it's another tax. We just collecting money, and which might be okay, you know, because we're always looking to raise our revenues. But there are majority, or vast majority of lots that do not share real dwellings. So, it's just fields. So, what about those lots? The owner might come in and say, "Hey, nobody's on the left, nobody's on the right, nobody's behind, nobody's on the front. Why are you charging me?" Are we really going to maintain those lots? The answer is no, we're not, we're not really doing that. Point that was made about wildlife, wildlife is wildlife. I would leave it alone, I would not do anything, you know? And how much far would we maintain as a city? Would we go 20 feet in, 10 feet? I mean, it's all, who's going to determine that? So, those questions needs to be answered. And the other is, impinging growth, as Commissioner Langdon brought it up, from what I recall, and it was said on this diocese, that always the answer to us, that the impinging growth would not be counted as a service to those owners. So, just the trees, correct?
No, this would, this would cover impinging growth as well.
So, vines and all that stuff?
Vines, vines and Brazilian pepper. The pepper is the primary culprit, but the vines, we are seeing an increase in that as well.
And the last point I want to make is, we open up ourselves as a city to some legal challenges, and that might be the question to our city attorney, interim city attorney. If we don't maintain one lot and the tree falls on somebody's, somebody else's house, the owner's going to sue. The owner of, who is sustaining, who will be sustaining the damages, might sue the city saying, "Hey, you did not maintain that lot." The owner of the vacant lot say, might say, "I paid my $100 fair share of registration fee. Now we have millions of dollars of lawsuit, or God forbid, it might injure a child or somebody." And there are so many things with this program that might not be really beneficial overall. And the last point I want to make is, I don't know in any vicinity around our area that has this program. So, why are we doing this? Why suddenly we want to maintain our lots, the vacant lots? So, these are my two cents. But I'm really concerned about the legal issues. I'm concerned about not being fair to those lots that on the other side of 75. I'm really concerned about this point that Mr. Mayor made. There's incentive to be, for good owners to be negligent owners. And honestly, I would take advantage myself. If, I mean, it's not morally right, but from practical standpoint, hey, I'm paying, I'm paying, I'm paying the fee, so have the city do it. So, these are my points for discussion, so if anybody wanted.
Yeah, before I move to next commissioner questions, I'd love staff to address some of Commissioner Petro's concerns so that they don't get lost. Some, Ms. Lani, you did, but.
I won't address the legal concerns, but I will say that we have a legal request in, and our interim city attorney has assigned himself that issue. So, our intent was if we were given direction to go ahead and continue moving forward this, the next step involves a significant amount of staff work, legal work, and we didn't want to undertake that without knowing whether we had a fair chance of this going forward. But those are all questions that we would be looking at through the next phase if we were to move forward. This program has been used in other cities around the state for many years. So, you know, those are things that we would be looking at with the interim city attorney. As far as whether someone would be more apt to take advantage of the program, as I said previously, I really do believe that is, anyone who would, it's a very small number. And we look at doing the most, the best for the most. We have a lot of homeowners out there who are dealing with this every day. We have homeowners, and we have a list of homeowners right now that want us to take trees down next to them, and we can't because we don't have any funding for it. We have people who will not allow their children to sleep in their bedrooms because they are on the side of a house where there is a huge dead tree that would fall, that could fall and go into those bedrooms. So, these are things that are affecting the lives of our current residents and taxpayers now. The, probably the majority of lots that are owned, that are undeveloped, are not owned by local voters, local residents. So, they're not the ones that are really being impacted by this. If we do not have another funding mechanism for these activities, we will be requesting a significant increase in the code enforcement budget from the general fund. We have a woefully inadequate code enforcement budget to maintain the city of the size that we have. And as more homes are built in areas and on streets where those homes are surrounded by undeveloped lots, this is becoming an increasing problem. It wasn't such a problem when most of the city was developed in the old portion of Northport where they came in and cleared everything years ago. But as the growth is continuing, it is becoming an increasing problem. We simply have no budget right now to take trees down. We spend all of our budget in about the first four months of the year, of the fiscal year. So, we have no abatement times.
If I can relate to, make a couple of comments. The hurricanes, they took a lot of trees. So, I see that first four months would, as you just said, wiped out the savings or whatever, because a lot of those were very dangerously leaning over maybe. But a point to that, you know, families cannot sleep, you know? If I was concerned about my family, I would hire and pay the money because, you know, it's life and death, right? I wouldn't, I wouldn't put my faith and trust in the city, you know? I would do it myself. But at the same time, you know, how far do we go in? 20 feet, 10 feet? The requests we're going to have as a city are going to be enormous. I see from practical point of view, this is, this program might be overrun. It's going to, it's going to cost us more than we're going to bring in. Maybe not, I might be mistaken. Point that a majority of lots are owned by outsiders. I know individual personally, he doesn't make much money, but his investment strategy is buying lots. So, he owns about 20 lots on the other side of 75. So, that's $2,000 a month, a year for him, just, you know? You'll turn in and sell those lots, you know, and lose money. I mean, this is not a good position for our building community, for developers, for people who want to build homes. Just like I said, we have to be honest with ourselves, the majority of lots are on the other side.
Not true, no, not true.
Well.
It's not accurate.
But I might be mistaken, and I, I mean, I didn't verify it. But I'm saying this, this is good on paper, but, you know, we have to wait and see what this will be. And about the other cities, like I said, in our vicinity with the area we live, I don't know, you brought up a couple of cities there. Most of those, those cities were developed completely. So, I don't know of any cities that have this program.
So, most of the lots that are undeveloped, that the sort of impact are on this side of 75. They are generally between Southford and the eastern edge of the city. While there are a few houses northeast of 75, there aren't many. So, the calls that we receive, keep in mind, we're not going to proactively go out and clear lots or take trees down. We do this on a complaint basis. Those complaints are coming in from people who own single-family homes that have the lots around them. We get about 50, 50 calls every week on these types of things. Some of them have one tree next to them, some of them have, we've seen up to nine trees. As far as homeowners going onto the lot next door and taking the tree down, they can do that. They can also be prosecuted for trespassing if the, if they meet, if that property meets the trespassing statutes, and they can also be sued for damage to property. It's not legal for them to go on that property and take that tree down. As far as which trees we take down, someone calls us and they complain about a tree next door or multiple trees next door. We go out, we assess that tree, one, to determine, is it really dead? Is it really dying? Is it really a hazardous tree? We do have people sometimes who will call on perfectly healthy pine trees that are next door to them, and they just don't like them being there. That is not a dangerous tree, that's not a hazardous tree. We will not take those down. But when we have trees that are dead and they are within, our arborists are, and folks are really good at looking at a tree and being able to determine the angle of it and know if that tree is close enough to a property that it would come down on it. Somebody calls us on a tree that's on the other side of a lot and it falls, you know, if a tree falls in the forest and nobody's there to hear it, does it really matter? If a tree falls on a lot and it's not going to hit a structure, does it really matter? So, we look at all of those things. We would look at assessing whether it might fall on the street and block traffic or whether it might hit a power line or those types of things as well. So, we do assess each tree to determine whether it should come down or not. As far as the amount of money that would come in for this program versus the amount that we would spend, we've run the numbers, we've looked at our historic numbers, we've looked at the numbers of complaints that we get, we looked at historic numbers from this program previously, and we are absolutely confident that we would be able to run this program under, under the fees. As far as how far in we would go for impinging growth, previously when the city did this program, I believe it was either 10 or 15 feet that they went in from the side. They didn't go all the way around the property, they went, if there was a home on one side of the property, that's where they went in. They didn't go to the other side and go in there too. If there's homes on all sides and there's impinging growth on all sides, then yes, we would. But if there's a house on one side of a property and that's where the impinging growth is, that's the only side that we cut. But it would be a 10 to 15 feet. The benefit of the city doing that rather than a homeowner doing it, we're also going to be looking for things like Gopher Tortoise Burrows. So, we're not going to be burying or impacting Gopher Tortoise Burrows. So, we're not going to be burying or impacting gopher tortoise burrows. So, from an environmental standpoint, we are, you know, we're very conscious of that. But we do feel like the impinging growth program worked previously that the city had, other than the money. That's where the issue was. If we'd had the funding, we'd probably still be doing it. But the program was terminated solely because of the funding.
Can the owner sue the city if the tree fell on his property and the owner of that lot was registered and was paying his fee?
I'll defer to the city attorney on that answer.
Well, you're not gonna like my answer, but, so this is America, you can sue a tree that you like. Whether or not they have a very good case or not is gonna depend on several factors that we wouldn't wanna lay out here right now, unfortunately. But we'll definitely consider that.
Takes only one lawsuit. It's just, I foresee that because the owner of the sustainable damage, the owner of the house might sue the owner of next-door lot and then subsequently will sue the city. So, that might be another disadvantage of this program.
Mr. DeValle, you're up.
First time this was brought up, I was totally against it. Further discussion of it, I changed my mind. I'm looking at this sheet here and I tried to look at, you know, pluses and minuses. Under the plus, provides relief to general fund for code enforcement efforts. As Alina mentioned, our code enforcement, we got five officers, that's just not enough for this city. We need more money for code enforcement. This can help with that. That's a plus. Removing hazardous trees, for me, this is the biggest plus, okay? I do not want to read in the newspaper that a child was crushed by a falling tree. And we do have, I discussed this with the city manager, I can leave here, before I get to my home, which is only four miles from here, I'm gonna go by dozens of dead trees. Two houses from mine, there are three trees that I keep telling my neighbor, they're not on her property. I keep telling her, one of these days, you're gonna get one, if not all three of those trees on your house. It can remove a financial and physical burden of homeowners dealing with impinging nuisance growth. This is my problem with this. The problem, the program before was initiated, you know, it came down to money because so many people saw this as, hey, city's gonna take care of this and there were so many complaints and so much to do, the city staff could not handle it. When it comes, you know, at the time that last ordinance came out, I owned a lot that was nowhere near my house. And I did go out and I assessed that property and on two sides, it was just another empty lot. On the backside, it was somebody's fence back there and I went and cleared that property out. How many other citizens actually did that? With the impinging growth part of it, I see a big influx of phone calls to the city, come and cut that grass around here. And that's gonna cost money, which will take away from some of the income that comes with And I have one more, one more issue and that is, I don't know about north of seventy-five, but you just go east of Toledo Bay and keep going east and there are thousands of lots that have no homes anywhere around them. Are we gonna be charging those people this hundred-dollar fee every year when tree falls on their property, it's not hurting any, there's no way it's hurting any, anybody else? So, you know, there's some issues to work on, I think, on this program, but overall, I think there is some, you know, like I say, with code enforcement, with getting rid of the, you know, dangerous trees and a couple of times, Ms. Ray, I believe you did, you know, mention dead trees. What about a tree that is alive, but it's at an angle, that the next time we do get a storm, you know, during Hurricane Ian, I do have a spare lot next to my house and I had one of my seventy-foot saw, saw slash pines that was alive and it got ripped out of the ground by the roots. Came down on my lot, didn't hurt anything, but that tree was leaning. I always watched that tree, but there was nothing it could harm, so I didn't worry about it. That did come down. Who's gonna make the determination, you know? And people will ask the question to say like, there's this tree, you know, it's alive, but it's leaning towards my house. Is the city gonna look, make that determination? Is it a dangerous tree? In my estimation, something is leaning there? Yeah, the possibility, you know, a tree can come down, but, you know, there's varying degrees of the danger. So, overall, I'm for this program, but I would like that question answered. What benefit is this to those thousands of lots that aren't near anything and they're just gonna be paying basically more, more money each year?
So, I can address a couple of those things. First, the easy one, easy, the leaning trees. We do look at the angle of those trees, what direction they're leaning in. So, if we, bearing in mind, we don't do any of this proactively, all of this would be complaint-based. But we do look at the angle, the height of the tree, whether the tree could fall on the house. And if the trees, generally our arborists say, you know, if the tree is leaning at more than, say, a thirty to thirty-five percent angle, then it would be much more likely to come down in a storm. A tree that's leaning five percent, healthy tree, yeah, it could, yes, it could absolutely come down in a Hurricane Ian. And that is part of the risk of where we live and one of the things that we deal with living in Florida. But from the point of whether it's considered a dangerous tree or hazardous tree, it really depends on the lean and the angle of lean and the height of the tree. So, we would, we would absolutely look at each of those. I can tell you as far as the lots that are out there on a street that may not have any houses on it, we still have to maintain those streets for passage for emergency vehicles. Some of those streets along Price, they'll have power lines during, after Hurricane Ian, the city spent a significant amount of money clearing streets. Trees that came down from empty lots, didn't matter if it was Salford or if it was Yorkshire. Those streets have to be passable because if somebody's out there on an ATV and is injured, police and fire have to get back there. They have to get to those streets. So, the city does incur expenses to clear those streets, to make sure that those streets are maintained in a passable way and this program could help with that as well.
We, you, you can have a lot of questions regarding this program. We really were trying to get the temperature of move forward or cease. And I see that if we move forward and bring you back some more answers and maybe some procedures that either ease your concerns or not, then that will put you in a position of making educated vote in a proper meeting. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, and I don't mean to jump in, but I was thinking the same thing and, you know, the salient issues were, program has some merit. Two, there's legal issues that need to be more thoroughly addressed, for sure. Thirdly, should this program be designed and structured so that all unimproved lot owners pay into it without, without regard to those compliant versus non-compliant? Or should this program heavily penalize the non-compliance and allow for blanket exemptions for those who comply, which would be an incentive for people to continue to take care of their lots perhaps, and make the financial burden so significant on those that don't that it still generates that significant revenue? And, in other words, the tax would be on everybody, you apply for an exemption, like Homestead exemption, you apply for the exemption. If you don't have any black marks on your record, then you get the exemption. If you fall out of favor and let your property go to hell, then what happens is you lose the exemption the next year and it takes you three years to earn the right to get it back, or five years or whatever we decide. But those things all like give you a general direction. I mean, program has enough merit, I think, unless we're all disagreeing, to like go do some more diligence on this and see what we can do if we can address the issues, everybody, you know? We all got pros, we've all got cons to this, but-
We'll keep going, basically back to the very-
I didn't mean to jump. Well, do you, anybody else wanna weigh in? Because I didn't mean to just-
Well, just quickly, I mean, clearly I'm pro this program. For me, it's really driven by dangerous trees. And again, the lot next to me, not that it's so special, I think it's representative. If you went to see it, there are clearly two trees that are dead because of those vines. So, for me, if it's a lot without trees and it's overrun with vines, we don't touch it. I think what really drives it is when there's a dangerous tree. And like with the property next to me, if those vines go unchecked, they're already going up the palm trees and pine tree and it's only a matter of time before those trees get choked off. In that kind of situation, I think it makes sense for us to address that invasive growth. And again, the intention of this program is not beautification, it's really driven by safety concerns. And as long as we keep that in mind and that's the way we pursue it and that's the way we communicate it, for me, I think it mitigates, you know, any legal concerns or other kinds of things. So, I'm violently in support of this program. My only comment from an implementation point of view is rather than requiring people to register, put it on everybody and let people apply to be, you know, why, why would anyone register their lot so we could charge them? It just, yeah, it just doesn't quite line up in my mind.
So, staff's got some pretty good direction, huh?
Yes, sir, we got it. This is perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Moving on.
Very last item, and not in the PowerPoint, but I've mentioned it earlier and we really are just getting the direction of how to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
From the conversation last week regarding the, what I boil it down to, the cost recovery of parks and recs. I sent you a lot of information yesterday and, you know, I was sending back a website on some data so that we could compare ourselves to industry standard and we've done that too. We'll get that back out to you so you can see how we compare to the industry standard. At the end of the day, you know, we do believe parks is an efficient department and this is not about the staff, to make sure I'm clear, staff, they know how we feel about them, we tell them all the time and even, we don't say it publicly, we have a great Parks and Recs team from top to bottom, leadership and all. So, we love our Parks and Recs team. Question on the table is, can we improve our cost recovery? Because that's what the issue is, is the amount of money that it generates versus the amount of expenses that it takes to run the various programs. Now, if the industry average is at twenty percent and we're at twenty-two percent and the city fee consultant last week said we should be at twenty-five percent, what does it take to get to thirty percent or thirty-five percent? Is it possible? How, if you do it over a five-year window or a more year window? The question is, would you like us to explore that and see and bring it back to you during the budget process at all? That's the question we're asking you today.
Could you repeat that once more? Just the end part. He's getting tired.
Here's the end part. We're at twenty, twenty percent is the industry average. We currently as a city are at twenty-two percent.
Oh, okay.
The consultant said we need to be at twenty-five percent. So, we're already working that angle right there based on what he told us. Now, do you wanna go further? Do you wanna recover more? What does thirty percent look like? What does thirty-five percent look like? And how long would it take us to get there?
Gotcha. I know exactly what you're asking. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Amherst, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I got, I got no issues with learning that. It's, once those numbers come in, that, that makes a decision going forward. But when we had talked about, you know, cutting services and this, that and the other earlier, like I said, this is a benefit to the community and it does cost. And, you know, that's the price that I'm willing to pay for, you know, solitude out there for some families, like they mentioned camp or being at the parks on the weekend. They may not be able to do anything other than that and that could be their only joy and stuff like that. Now, if we needed to recover more funds, the only thing that I came up with was when we're dealing with like the aquatic center or Warmell Springs, you look in the fee schedule, not to increase the citizens' partake, but the non-residents' partake and look at raising that fee because the citizens are already paying through their taxes. They deserve some sort of a discount going into these facilities. The other ones are not paying it. So, get a little bit more from, from that side of the fence, like raise it up twenty-five, fifty percent. I don't know what those numbers are, but, you know, if Warmell Springs is charging ten dollars out there for non-residents, maybe it should be fifteen. I, I don't, I'm just using that as an example. But the citizens stay the same, that's their benefit. So, on those ends and those, just those two things, you can recoup just maybe a little bit more to help offset and add to the Parks and Rec Fund down the road to where they're a little bit co-existent with different types of programs going on because they may be able to put on another benefit throughout the summer when people are down here wanting to relax, you know? And that could cover the cost of that. It's, it's given back to the citizens and that's the one way that we really do, other than the mowing services and road drainage and whatever out there, which they're saying we're not doing a good job at anyways. But we always get told we're doing a great job with Parks and Recs. So, we gotta keep our, our key numbers going and keep it good.
Yes, sir. And to be clear, we're talking about if you want us to do that, we would make a thoughtful exercise of the process, you know, whether it's new events that would maximize space that we have that might bring in more revenue, whether it's looking at costs that we're currently charging right now based on resident or not, whether it's adjusting hours here or there or equipment there or here, you know, it's, I don't wanna make it sound like we're just gonna come and bring something in front of you that is going to be, yes, well, you know we're not gonna close all the parks, so why did you put this on here? We really, if it's truly the will of the board to look at it and say, we would like this cost recovery, which is already above industry average, to be more, what would that look like? We would go do that, bring it back.
Right, I would, and again, I'd rather see it enhanced rather than taken away from. So, how, how can we make it better but still recover those costs by doing so?
Understood.
That's where I'm at, I'm at. That's as simple as I can put it.
Understood.
I, two things I'd like to say. One, I, I personally am not really in favor of looking at ways to increase the cost recovery from parks and recs. Quite frankly, as we look at the budget overall, as I've said, Parks and Recs is the second least impacted. It's four-point-four percent of the budget. I think that as you figure out how we can cut costs in our city budget, it's up to staff to figure out how, where, which ways, what to do. Every department will be a little unique and different, they will see it different ways, whether it's across the board, whether it's surgically going through different things, whether it's personnel, whether it's expenses. That is your job, it is not our job. I don't wanna sit here and cherry pick how and where and way. What we need to do is decide, and that's my next piece, is, you know, I'm gonna make a consensus for whatever it's worth, you can all vote for it or not vote for it, but it'll be on the record. I wanna make a consensus to reduce, to look into reducing the mileage-
I want to make a consensus to reduce, to look into reducing the millage rate and what the impacts would be, okay, on services and, you know, but a consensus to look at a millage rate decrease and have staff come back and bring that to us. You know, I don't want to leave it just up in the air. So I'll be making that consensus after everybody has something to say. Commissioner Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I agree with the mayor that I'm a lot more comfortable with giving some general direction on expenses and costs rather than singling out one department. But since we have a consultant recommendation to shoot for a twenty-five percent cost recovery in parks, I'd be interested in seeing that. To put work into thirty percent, I just don't think that's practical in any stretch of the imagination. I'm a huge proponent of figuring out how do we increase the utilization of our parks assets. I think someone else said it earlier. I'm way more interested in what services and programs we can overlay on what we have rather than getting rid of what we have. I'm not a supporter of, unless there's a program that's really underutilized and we shouldn't do it anymore. That's a whole different thing. But I'd be happy when the time is right to ask for a consensus on at least looking at the twenty-five percent and what would that look like? I would also throw on the table, probably a bit premature, but you opened it up, City Manager, by saying there's no sacred cows. It's been ten or more years since we looked at outsourcing trash, solid waste. We might want to look at that again. At the time, I think it was about ten years ago. And again, I'm not recommending this. Please don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I just had one of my bulk pickups that we get for free. I love solid waste, but there are no sacred cows. And we really have to look at everything. And some communities are spending a lot less on solid waste. So again, it's just kind of looking at, is there a savings in that? What would we be giving up in terms of quality of service? And again, I'm not recommending that we get rid of solid waste. I just think we need to look at it in the same way. And I've sort of changed my thinking around. We should look at if we reduced the millage rate. I mean, why not look at it? And what would that look like? So that's where I'm at.
And I have one more to you, Madam Commissioner, regarding sacred cows. Me and Mr. Speak, the Public Works, we're talking about how do we get people to recycle more? And, you know, is there an ordinance or a rule that can be passed for recycling? I think he's, in an example, we weren't sure if it was here in Florida. But, you know, recycling matters. And the more we get people to take it seriously, the better off we all are, even if people don't understand it of why we're asking them to do it. So, you know, we're trying to think way outside the box here.
Good, and I really appreciate that. And cost savings is one thing, but there are also such environmental impacts of not, yeah.
Right.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, understood.
These are just general-type answers here. Would I consider a millage rate increase?
Increase. Increase or decrease?
Increase.
I'm hearing you. Can you do more?
Right, you do.
Can you do more?
Would I rather see it stay the same? Yes. Considering that we just borrowed from Peter to pay Paul to get price moving, a millage decrease at this time? I just can't see it. Make plans for two, three, four years down the road? You know, look at things to say, yeah, you know, maybe we could do it. But a decrease now with all the things that we have, you know? Consider those two water control structures that we just moved some funds for. A decrease now, I just can't see it. Parks and Recreation. We had some public comments. And I have to kind of defend my fellow Commissioner, Ms. Langdon. A lot of the comments and, you know, things I've seen were directed towards her. We are a commission here. And I don't recall her recommending that we close the Mullen Center. She did mention something like, you know, Planet Fitness charges twelve dollars a month. Those are, fitness end of the Mullen Center get used enough to... Basically, what I'm saying is, we can make adjustments, but no one, including Ms. Langdon, is suggesting that we cut Parks and Recreation.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, that's the good. Now you want the bad? Well, before I get to the bad, again, I want to reiterate that idea that City Manager mentioned that I've talked about. As FPL rates go up, we could get the same amount of revenue if we slowly decrease the tax rate that we charge on electric bills. That's a way of kind of helping our citizens. It makes the city look good in that we're trying to control costs for the citizens. Okay, well, now I'll get into the bad. City Commission, we want to lower some costs. How about we get off of that pay formula that we have that's based on population? I brought this up before. Set Commissioner pay at a certain level and then adjust it for CPI, just like a lot of other people have. Put that in a charter. And again, I want to, last thing, I swear. I don't need it. City, you can stop paying for it. Staff, I mentioned this in our last meeting. Look at a program where staff in each of their departments. I don't know how finance can reduce their costs. But people who work in finance might. Let the people that work for the city look at ways to possibly cut some costs in their own departments and then give them a share of that savings.
Love it.
Reward them.
Love it.
That's it for me.
Vice Mayor? Yeah, I agree with Commissioner DeBau on quite a few things. Just, just so you know, the process on when you brought up the Commissioner's salary. I've already talked with Jerome about this after we had the votes and stuff. But talking about it to change it would be, you know, we can talk about it now. We can talk about it next year. But it would not take effect until after the next election. So there's time to be able to gather our thoughts and come up with solutions on what we feel would be proper for that. Because right now, it's set in stone until the next election. And even further, if it is not changed. So we may want to revisit that within the next two years, at least.
Well...
That's all I'm saying.
On that note, okay, I mentioned this and talked about it, you know, a couple of months ago, okay? And as you just suggested, you know, let's keep it in mind. Well, I will be reminding us of that.
Right. That works.
That, I'm looking for consensus. I'll make mine first. I know, Commissioner Langdon, you have one. I'd like to direct staff to calculate the impact a three million dollar cut in expenses would have on the millage rate along with the annual savings a property owner would realize based upon a three hundred thousand dollar assessed value if this cut in expenses were to be cast onto property owners in the form of a millage rate reduction and provide cost-cutting options and impacts necessary to achieve this savings. That is the consensus. Commissioner Petro? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I say yes. Any information's good to know.
I'm a yes, obviously. Commissioner Langdon?
I'm a yes.
And Commissioner DeBau? We have a consensus. Commissioner Langdon, I know you have one.
Well, I don't know if we really need it on the impinging growth, but just to cover with taking into account the comments today, I would make, I always want to say a motion, but I would just ask for a vote on instructing staff to move forward with what that program would look like.
Commissioner DeBau?
I agree.
Yes, the mayor's a yes.
I'm a yes. It's just information. He's a sure.
So we got four and a fifty yes. So staff has some reasonable direction. What else? Does anybody else have a consensus? Is there anything else staff would like in the way of direction?
I think we're good, Mr. Mayor. But again, we're at the worktop in April. We're going to bring you back more information.
Exactly.
We're going to probably over-communicate everything that we do this particular year just to make sure everyone's on the same page. And we'll please invite the two new Commissioners to have additional meetings with us as a staff about the budget so that we can sort of keep you and your questions up to date. That might be helpful. So just be prepared.
And again, I'd just like to reiterate how important it is that here we pay attention to our charter responsibilities. Commission's responsibility is always to provide direction. It's staff's job to figure out the how. That's not to dump the tough job on them, but they are the best equipped. Our staff, our department heads, these people are superstars. You people are great at what you do. If anybody can find a way to make this least painful, to figure out the fairest way, to find a way to do this without compromising public safety, without compromising quality of life, you guys can do it. We can't do it. So we ask you to do the best you can, bring us back all the options and then we can, you know, digest it all and figure out what's the best direction to go forward as we really, you know, wrap this budget together. So thank you all so much for today. And if there's nothing else to this, guess, do we have any public comments?
We do.
Oh, boy.
You do?
Yep, Doris Gallin. I am writing in response to Commissioner Langdon's remarks at the March third meeting, particularly regarding the proposed cuts to the Parks and Recreation Department's budget. While I understand the need for fiscal responsibility, I believe that these cuts would have a detrimental impact on our community, especially when it comes to our youth and the programs that serve them. The Mullen Center camps and after-school programs are essential in providing a safe and supportive environment for children. These programs not only promote physical activity and recreation, but also serve as a critical lifeline for young people, offering mentorship and guidance from our dedicated recreation staff. The positive relationships formed between staff and children help foster a sense of belonging, which is key to their emotional and social development. These programs are crucial for the preventing youth crime and providing alternatives to risky behavior. By cutting funding to Parks and Recreation, we are jeopardizing the future of these important initiatives and potentially increasing the risk of crime and unrest amongst our youth due to the lack of structured outlets. The absence of these programs would leave many children without the safe spaces and support systems they rely on. Moreover, while public safety is important, investing in prevention through recreational programs should be a priority. By fostering a healthy, engaged, and connected community, we can reduce the need for further police intervention. I'm concerned that Commissioner Langdon's remarks about cuts to the Parks and Recreation may be an attempt to justify the need for the proposed one hundred million dollar police station rather than addressing the root causes of crime and youth disengagement in our community. Protecting our parks and investing in our youth is a long-term investment in the safety, health, and well-being of the entire community. Michelle Gore, Commissioners. I am Michelle Gore, this year's event coordinator for the Northport High School Project graduation. I would like to address the discussion at the March third meeting regarding the potential closure of the Mullen Center. At this year's event, as this year's event coordinator for Project Graduation, I spent countless hours searching for a venue that could accommodate two hundred and fifty students. After contacting numerous locations from Venice to Pona Gorda, I found that only a few were capable of hosting an event of this size, let alone at a reasonable cost. The Mullen Center provides a safe, accessible, and affordable space for our graduates to celebrate together. Every dollar saved on venue cost goes directly back to the students in the form of gifts to help them as they transition into the next stage of their lives. Parks and Recreation facilities are not just amenities. They are integral to the quality of life that makes Northport a desirable place to live. These spaces bring joy, foster community, and serve as essential resources for residents of all ages. Rather than cutting these valued services, I urge you to explore efficiencies and strategies for growth to balance the budget without diminishing the very things that make Northport a thriving community. Thank you for your time and consideration. And that is all.
Thank you very much, City Clerk.
Wow, Barbara.
I am an ogre.
You make a good lightning rod. Well, if there is nothing else, it is 5:01, and I adjourn this workshop.